We already took the roll and called the meeting to order because we had to go into a closed session this evening to be briefed by the city attorney on housing code matters and potential litigation. So we are back again. At the moment, we have no changes to our agenda. And given the city elections on November 3rd, we do not have any upcoming agenda items scheduled. So that takes us then to our recognition for this week. And I'm glad to see so many people with us. I'm going to actually share my screen from a picture, from a picture from this weekend that Councilwoman Searcy and I got to visit with the young people who are putting together the bake sale for the Black Lives Matter movement. And so I will read the mayoral proclamation to you, and then we'll, we'll open it up and see if any of the young people want to say anything this evening. So, "Whereas a number of young people aged six to 16 years old, living primarily in the New Hampshire Gardens neighborhood, have been running regular bake sales over a period of about 12 weeks. And whereas over $3,000 in funds have been raised from the bake sale, and those funds are donated to the Movement for Black Lives Organization, with some funds donated to Small Things Matter. And whereas the young people were aware that the movement and racism and police violence against Black and Brown people was taking a load nationally, and wanted to do something to help. And whereas the deaths of Breonna Taylor, Tamir Rice, Trayvon Martin, and George Floyd, along with many other Black and Brown people at the hands of the police, has people around the country calling for social justice. Whereas some of the comments of the young people include, 'We have the opportunity to bring about change, meaningful change, and that starts with each of us.' It's not that easy to grow up and not be suspect with skin like mine. And I want to grow up non-suspect." And another quote, "After we realized there was going to be a second civil rights movement, we thought we should do our part, so all, so all kids, no matter the color of their skin, or where you live, can have a better future." And whereas the young people bake the treats and make lemonade with some help from their parents, staff the stall, interact with customers, make change, and attract customers who are walking or driving by. And during the sale and handling the baked goods, they wear masks and gloves for safety. And that whereas the young people involved include: Molly James and Eddie O'Brien, James and Jaleel Small, Hayden Schwartz, Jonathan Meto, Sawyer and Mila Adams, Jackson and Eden Grenovild, Grenovild, excuse me, Liam and Yana Smith, Toby and Annalise Wilkinson, Alex Franklin Mindle, Sasha Vanzensky, Sophie and Leo Shelter Marks, and Ben and Andrew Corcoran. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council staff and residents, do hereby express appreciation to the young people holding the bake sales to support the Movement for Black Lives while providing delicious treats for the community." And I will stop sharing my screen, if I can find it, and ask any of the young people if they would like to say a few words. And you can unmute yourselves. I see a bunch of you from the weekend.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us have the proclamation. I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
I think they're following people that have helped with the bake sale too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's awesome and super cool to see how doing such a small thing makes such a big difference.
Mm-hmm. If, I think this weekend, it's from the bake sales from...
There you go. Molly was ready. All right, at 2:30. Good, Saturday. And where is it located? Remind people.
On the corner of Wood.
On the...
Wildwood and Longwood.
Did everyone hear that? The corner of Merrwood and Wildwood?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the inner section.
From the Wildwood that I think.
Yeah. Well, and you can hear you too.
Yeah.
I can hear you on New Hampshire Avenue, quite frankly. So, all right. Well, thank you all for joining us this evening. And we look forward to getting more baked goods and supporting Black Lives Matter with you all this weekend. And we really appreciate all your hard work and dedication to this. So, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Mayor Kate.
Bye.
Bye.
Goodbye.
Great. Great. All right. Well, those are our recognitions for today. Just as a reminder for people, since we came back into the session in September, we've been doing recognitions of members of our community who have really stepped up and done some really amazing things during the crisis on COVID, as well as standing up for racial justice. So, thank you, everyone. Let's see. We have public comments on voting items, and then public comments more generally. We received since our work session last week on personnel and personnel, a number of questions regarding the collective bargaining agreement with local 400. I just want to let folks know that we did post on the city website with the agenda item this evening, answers to some of the questions that had come up. Particularly, there were questions around reduction in force and layoffs, and whether any of those would preclude us from making changes in our police department, once we got recommendations back from our reimagining Public Safety Task Force. And so I hope that answers the questions for folks. I'm sure there'll, there'll be other ones when we get into our discussion. But I also wanted to have, turn it over to the city manager, who, if you had some other things to point out.
Thank you. I would like to note, it was posted late today. So I just want to give some highlights from the question and answer sheet that we've added to the website. In that question and answer sheet is a question about how much is the proposed wage increase, and does it include a cost of living increase? Because there was some folks assuming that there was the cost of living increase in addition to what is being proposed as a 1.5% increase. There is not anything additional, other than the 1.5% increase. It is the equivalent of one step on last year's salary grid, and it averages to about $16.50 a week for the local 400 members. As I said, no cost of living increase, no adjustment by the Employment Cost Index for state and local government employees, does not have extra money for hazard pay, and does not have any extra funds for receiving a distinguished on-ones evaluation. As the mayor mentioned, questions came up about, does the contract restrict options for reducing the number of police officers as other public safety models are considered? And I first want to note that, first of all, we, we have a good amount of turnover in our police department, just the nature of the work. So we have frequent vacancies. And that's why we are often recruiting for new officers. But officer positions may be left vacant without any special action required. There's nothing that has to be triggered to leave a position vacant. The contract says that the city will not lay off officers during, during the term of the collective bargaining agreement, except if there is a fiscal crisis. But it also allows for reductions in force. And it states that the city management has the right to determine the organizational structure, job classifications, and personnel. And those are the kinds of things that would be looked at under a, under a variety of different public safety models. So it's not something, we are not restricted at all in terms of the flexibility that we have to adjust to the police department as the Public Safety Task Force is, makes its recommendations, and the council considers them. The collective bargaining agreement that's before you does not apply to those officers outside of the bargaining unit, which are sergeants and above. But again, there's lots of, there are vacancies, and there will be some coming up. So there's flexibility. There was also some question about how would the grievance procedure change if the Law Enforcement Officer's Bill of Rights, which is LEOBR, is repealed? A repeal of LEOBR would not negate or remove the contractual grievance and arbitration procedure that's in the code, that's in the CVA. And the grievance procedure in the collective bargaining agreement was not changed during the recent negotiations. If you look on this sheet, you can see what the different steps are in those typical grievance procedure. And generally, officers have used LEOBR if they are, if there's a case of discipline or discharge. But if there isn't LEOBR, then the grievance procedure would, would remain. So I just wanted to call that to people's attention, because those are the questions that were popping up a lot today, and wanted to make sure that you recognize that we tried to share that information, but it was late in the day. Also posted on the website is the text of the collective bargaining agreement with the redline version of the changes that are proposed. The, our labor attorney is with us this evening. And so when we get to that item, he'll be available for questions from council. Thanks very much.
Great. Thank you for that update. And so the first speaker we have tonight, our first voting item, let's see, we had second reading ordinance regarding principles of council compensation. I don't believe anyone signed up for that. The next was a second reading ordinance approving request of the, from the Committee on the Environment to suspend its operations. Ms. Colleen Cordis signed up to speak to that, as well as the collective bargaining agreement for local 400. Ms. Cordis did request additional time tonight. So you have five minutes to address both of those.
It was surprising and disappointing to watch the mayor, the city manager, and the council last week tiptoe around why in the world they were suddenly voting on an ordinance to officially suspend the Committee on the Environment, one of the city's major advisory groups. Mayor Stewart, you introduced the discussion by blandly noting that several members had recently resigned, and the remaining members had asked the council to temporarily suspend the group. And Mayor Stewart, these are your words, "They didn't actually give their reason, so that they could work with a racial justice facilitator." That was obviously spin. Not the kind of frank conversation about historic white dominance of our civic affairs that we must begin to have if we're serious about dismantling structural racism right here in Tacoma Park. The obscure way the mayor described the reason for this ordinance, the equally obscure way the city manager presented the issue in her agenda item, and in the draft ordinance, she had the city attorney right. And the complicity of the four white members of the council in avoiding clarifying for the public why the committee is now inactive. All of these shout louder than words when our city's white leaders have not yet found their voices in terms of breaking uncomfortable white silences about very local racial issues. We can expect and hope for many more examples of similar messy moments ahead, as residents start calling out and trying to change historic local patterns of racism. Mayor Stewart, Ms. Ludlow, members of the city council, please in the future be braver and break those uncomfortable white silences. Each of you knew what actually happened at the COE, but none of you spoke openly about it. I can only speak for myself as one of the five members who recently resigned. But I do want to help set the record straight. Why is the Committee on the Environment suddenly inactive? Because the majority of us looked around, took serious note of the structural racism ingrained in the city's entire system of mostly white, mostly homeowner advisory groups. And we couldn't ignore how intensely that pattern of structural racism was reflected in our own committee. We knew we couldn't be part of this charade, that an all-white, or even almost all-white committee could fairly or wisely provide advice that represented the input and interests of our incredibly diverse community. First, the only member of color, frustrated with the committee's inability to deal directly and constructively with racial issues, offered her resignation in September. She was one of our most active, and in terms of relevant environmental expertise, most highly qualified members. Sadly, her offer to resign was promptly accepted by the two white co-chairs. That left COE as an all-white group of eight. Soon, one by one, four more of us resigned outright, including former council member Seth Bryan. All of us recognizing that there was no way our now all-white committee could possibly effectively represent our community, which is majority residents of color, as well as nearly half home renters. That left the committee with just four white members, who agreed on October 5th, to ask the council to temporarily suspend the committee's operation. They also asked if they could continue meeting with the excellent racial justice facilitator the city hired for about $3,300 to work with COE. The four hoped to develop recommendations for how the council could diversify all of the city's advisory groups. That's exactly what the first draft of the ordinance envisioned last week. No white person volunteered. How odd that seemed. The four remaining white members, the only ones willing to stay on the committee despite its lack of diversity, were now to make recommendations for diversifying all of the city's committees? It was left to council member Searcy, one of the only two council members of color, to point out that that made no sense at all. That part of the ordinance was dropped, but it should not have been left to council member Searcy to call for that deletion. Mayor Stewart, Ms. Ludlow, and city council members, would each of you please speak up tonight? Acknowledge the decision by the majority of COE members to recognize that such an undiverse group could not deal squarely and fairly with environmental issues. As you know, issues of environmental justice are at the core of local, as well as national and global environmental challenges. We need climate justice rooted in racial and economic justice to be at the core of Tacoma Park's climate emergency framework. So I urge you, as you rethink our boards, committees, and commissions, please rethink the focus, as well as the membership of these panels. We need resident input, yes, on the issues, but please consider a much sharper focus, not on the environment per se, but on environmental justice. Thank you.
Ms. Cordis, did you also want to speak to the, the CBA?
How much time do I have left?
15 seconds.
I would urge the council not to treat this as a pro forma basis. I heard what Ms. Ludlow, you said, but I think some more questions, some top, really quiz the city manager here on the grievances. What kind of things can be expunged, and why would you expunge them? And why do we need this agreement that no officers will be laid off unless there's a legitimate fiscal crisis?
Thank you.
On purpose that's up served. Thank you.
Um, next, we have Ali Soares.
Sorry, I was a little slow bringing Ali Soares in. So, but they're in now. Swires.
Ali Swires is, are they, are they here, or?
Yes, I believe so.
Ali, did you want to be on video, or? Oh, there's Ali. Okay, we can see you now. Good. You're good.
You. Great. My name is Ali Swires, Cockrell Avenue, Ward 3. Both the police chief and literature circulated by a number of residents have professed support for having Tacoma Park Police take on the role of guardians to the community. Guardianship implies an obligation to protect. I want to remind everyone that it is absolutely not the job of the police to protect us or act as our guardians. They have absolutely no legal or contractual obligation to do so. Police are well within their rights to be selective about when they decide to intervene to protect the lives and property of others, even when there is obvious and imminent threat to someone's life or safety. Two major Supreme Court cases make this very clear, DeShaney versus Winnebago, and Town of Castle Rock, to name a couple, versus Gonzalez. In the last couple of months, and as recently as two days ago, our mayor and members of our council spoke about reimagining public safety and support for a defund model for our policing. It seems perhaps there is a bit of confusion as to what defund means, so I want to use this as an opportunity to clarify. Defund the Police is a model that calls for specific action, taking away funding the police department, that includes salary, and using that funding to invest in the community. A $25,000 salary increase for the department is the exact opposite of defunding the police. I am not the only one upset and a bit confused by this apparent hypocrisy. $25,000 could keep a significant number of people housed and fed during the pandemic. Housing is public safety. $25,000 could pay for internet access for families struggling with home learning, doing work from home, job applications, signing up for SNAP, unemployment, or accessing telehealth. Access and healthcare is public safety. $25,000 is a small but solid chunk of funding that should be invested back into our community, if we have it available. Our city needs to commit to a 0% salary increase for this contract, and to move funds out of the police department for future budgets, and into programs that actually protect our community in the long term. I ask you to prove that the recent words of promise to our community are not empty ones. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we have Paul Yvner.
Jesse, you got me? Can you hear me, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Delicia. How's my volume? I tend to be loud. I apologize. Okay, I want to be clear about my thoughts on the police department. I seek nothing less than the total reorganization of the Tacoma Park Police Department. It is a top-heavy, and it is unnecessarily expensive. Its administrative department is redundant of the city's general government administration department. There is redundancy in the police department's communications and criminal investigations division with that of Montgomery County. It is administratively and bureaucratically burdensome and out of proportion to community needs and goals. Our goal should be akin to a co-policing model, under Montgomery County umbrella, with our local cops on the beat, much more like the community policing model that the council has espoused. All of the above should be embedded with a new concept of community helper and guardian, not the current military-style policing of SWAT teams and K-9 units, so reminiscent of slave pounds and slave patrols. This collective bargain agreement before the council tonight is little changed from the last agreement. More business as usual. There are the same five pages dedicated to the different types of leave, the $60,000 SUVs, the 56 vehicles, the 300,000, the $3,000 a year car allowance, the same inflated salaries and benefits that will accrue, while hundreds, perhaps thousands of residents face imminent eviction January 1st. To directly address the resolutions before us tonight, the council should table the motions from the city manager until the residents who pay for these services have the time to review and advise on the issues at hand. Not just the two days we've been given. Many, if not most, of the council members here have openly said they wanted to suspend the K-9 unit. It is time to eliminate Article 42 K-9 care from the contract during these negotiations, and in the face of the current fiscal crisis. Eliminate Article 5.4B, the Law Enforcement Officer's Bill of Rights, from this contract. Recently, the Maryland House Work Group, to address accountability, voted to repeal the law, a law that still exists in only 16 states. The city should do the same, and do it now. Sign a shorter contract, one or two years, not the customary three-year agreement. These are not ordinary times. The council should rescind the no layoff clause, Article 13.8, from this contract. The time to address this issue is during negotiations. We should not be bound to having to have a fiscal crisis before the council can act. Rather, the city's responsibility to its residents would be to attempt to avoid a crisis by possibly implementing a targeted layoff program. Since all of you are again running for leadership positions in the coming election, show the voters what real leadership means to you, and vote for what you have said that you want. As Amy McGrath, the Democratic candidate running against Mitch McConnell, said, "Leadership is about getting the job done." So don't pass the buck to the next council. Show some of that real leadership, and vote now to get the job done.
Thank you, Mr. Yvner. Our next speaker tonight is Mr. Roger Schlegel.
Hello, I'm Roger Schlegel, Allegheny Avenue, Ward 3. I'm not speaking as an expert on the collective bargaining agreement. I simply want to amplify the concerns of other residents on how this agreement might hamper the ability of the reimagining Public Safety Task Force to push for substantive, rapid changes in our approach to policing, which could include such things as the K-9 unit, the Law Enforcement Officer's Bill of Rights, the length of this contract, and the no layoff clause, Article 13.8. I would ask the council to table this motion granting the manager authority to sign this contract until residents can examine and discuss the issue more closely, especially in light of the defund the police movement and our ongoing fiscal crisis. Thank you. especially in light of the defund the police movement and our ongoing fiscal crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Jane Machui. Um, and that's it for, I think, everyone who signed up for voting items. Ms. Machui signed up for general comments. Ms. Carpenter, is Ms. Machui having any difficulty putting on her camera and microphone?
I am not certain. Um, I, she is in the meeting.
Um, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, Ms. Machui, we can hear you and we can see you.
I don't know if I can deal with it. I'm concerned about all this talk about racism. I have a biracial son and I had a really, I'm not even thinking of speaking to my sister because she's very racist and she started telling me about, I should vote for Trump because he's going to save the country from the Black Lives Matter people. I mean, I'm not lying. It's insane, but that's the way she is and she's my only sibling. And how do I, my son, who's also has autism, is greatly affected by this. I mean, we have a hard time dealing with this stress in our family. And I think we should look at, and I know it's not as romantic as talking about people shooting people and that's not a good thing to do, obviously, but what about the economic racism? That's at the, and I, I believe in reparations for black Americans born here who make under fifty thousand a year. I suggest that we give them that reparations. And I see a big disparity and I see so many black nannies or whatever taking care of white children. I don't see any of the opposite and, and, and it strikes me as unequal. And if, as long as this inequality exists, we're going to have the racism and, and the shootings probably and other things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Machui. Um, okay, next we'll go to council comments. I'm not seeing any hands. If you raised your hand, it's not coming up, so. Is it not working tonight? Maybe somebody just wants to physically, uh, Councilwoman Cersei, thank you, you're up.
All right, I was forced to be first. Good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to thank again, um, the, the young people who came out for the proclamation, uh, for, uh, all of the fundraising efforts and the bake sales they've had around Black Lives Matter. Um, and so just as a reminder, in case folks weren't able to hear, um, the, there will be another bake sale um, on, oh gosh, at two thirty on Saturday, correct? Um, at the corner of Wildwood and Merewood, so, um, that's in Ward Six. So if you're interested in supporting the young ones, um, believe me, you will hear them. If you get lost, just follow the voices. You'll, you'll find them. Uh, there's a lot of things that are happening in terms of the Purple Line, actually. So I do want to remind folks or kind of give folks a couple of heads up, um, in terms of things that are happening. Um, tomorrow at seven, District Twenty is hosting a virtual, um, community discussion with leadership, um, from the, um, Purple Line. Uh, we have also received emails about the community advisory team meetings. Um, it looks like the state is convening those as well. I know, right? Um, so the University Boulevard, um, Community Advisory Team Meeting, it will be virtual and it will be on December the first at six thirty. And, um, Councilmember Smith, the Long Branch Community Advisory Team Meeting, and that usually includes the R-List Stop, uh, is on December the seventeenth at six thirty. Um, so there are a number of things that are, um, happening in terms of the Purple Line. Um, I also want to note, um, that there will be a, um, so there will be a, um, a pedestrian vigil. Just trying to just make sure I have the right to be. Yes. Um, so there will be a, um, a, um, Action Committee for Transit vigil um, that will happen on the twenty-fourth, which is Saturday. Uh, you're like confirming because my, my days are awful. Um, and, uh, in, uh, support of, um, two individuals who were struck and killed along, um, in the Long Branch area, along University, um, Boulevard. Um, Gomez Gonzalez, who was twenty-four, um, and was hit, um, and killed by a hit-and-run driver on Carroll Avenue on September the twentieth. Um, and, uh, Santos Yul Gonzalez is twenty-three, who was struck and killed on September the fifth on University Boulevard. Um, so I will be, um, joining members, um, for Action Committee for Transit. Um, and that event will be held on, um, uh, University Boulevard, I believe, at two P M. In Long Branch. Um, so there's lots of events that are happening, um, over the course of the next few days. Um, and definitely if you're interested in things like the Purple Line, um, it seems like since the state takeover that they are still issuing alerts as well. So, um, I'm not sure if they're using the same, um, alert system as Purple Line Transit Partners. We'll learn more tomorrow, um, but definitely want to ask people to, um, check things out and sign up for alerts so that you can receive all of the updated information on what's happening in terms of the Purple Line. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Cersei. Um, Councilmember Smith?
Uh, first, Councilmember Cersei, could you please forward me the information regarding the Purple Line? Because I may have missed it, you know, uh, so it would be great if you could send it to me so I can make sure residents in Ward Five know about it.
Will do.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to thank everyone who came out to the COVID nineteen and flu shot event on Sunday uh, that was hosted by Mary Center, Ventus Healthcare, Giant Food, CASA, and a number of other organizations. It was fantastic. There were probably at least a hundred people that came out. Uh, I even got a flu shot. You can watch me, uh, experience the whole thing on Twitter. So I just want to thank everybody that, that helped put this thing together. It, it was great. This coming Monday, October twenty-sixth, there will be a dental clinic across the street from Sligo Church in, uh, the parking lot. Sligo Church is located at seventy-seven Hundred Carroll Avenue. This is not a campaign event. It has nothing to do with my campaign. I initially put out information. I wanted to make sure residents knew about it. I used, uh, my website to inform, uh, residents because the sponsor of the event, people, I don't think, uh, know who they are. They're a great organization. I'm just, I was just trying to, uh, make it easier for residents to, uh, know that this was something that they should really pay attention to. So on October twenty-sixth, starting at eight thirty A M., there will be free oral exams, free cleaning, and free oral treatments. Let me say that one more time. Free exams, free cleaning, and free oral treatments. The event is sponsored by American Diversity Group. They do a lot of work in Montgomery County. This is the first time they are doing anything in Tacoma Park. They would like to be a future partner, providing services in the city. Uh, it is really difficult and let me tell you, I've tried to get dental services free or low-cost dental services in the city. I recently had a meeting with the Executive Director of Catholic Charities to talk about, uh, moving forward with something in the city. It is tough. It's very, very expensive to have a permanent, uh, location. So second best is a mobile, uh, dental clinic. I hope residents can come out. There is a signup requirement. You have to make an appointment. That information is on all my social media, whether it's Twitter, Facebook, Instagram. Has nothing to do with Councilmember Jared Smith. Let me say that one more time. Nothing to do with Councilmember Jared Smith. It is being held in Ward Five, so I would hope that the city can, uh, support this in some way. Uh, I would like to thank, uh, ADG's president, Mayor Moody. We shot a short video that's up on, uh, social media, talks about all the great programming he's doing, uh, across the county. Uh, this, once again, is not a campaign event and it has nothing to do with my campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Kostick.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I want to thank the Waco Neighborhood Association for a great meeting on Monday night. We had, um, an election forum with candidates for mayor and candidates for Ward Three. And this is a longstanding tradition of the Waco neighborhood to have during each election season. And it was really great to be able to do it virtually, even though we couldn't do it in person. So I want to thank everyone who came out for that. I also wanted to share some updates from the Transportation Planning Board meeting today. Um, we had an extended session today to talk in the morning as well as in the afternoon. Uh, our, our regular session, the afternoon and morning session focused on, um, climate change and the connections with transportation. Um, this is a topic that we sort of delve into a little bit in TPB, but don't always get an opportunity to talk about really in-depth. So it was a really great opportunity to, um, focus a little more on this. And here's some presentations, um, on a variety of different initiatives that are happening in the region. Uh, the TPB also authorized a, or endorsed a, um, uh, an interim goal um, in the, um, the COGS, um, long-range plan of achieving a reduction of eighty percent greenhouse gases by twenty forty. Um, we, there had previously just been a, um, a twenty percent goal in twenty twenty and we endorsed, um, adding an interim goal in twenty thirty of reaching a fifty percent reduction. So this was a, a good step forward. Um, we also had the beginnings of what I think are really useful discussion about the role of the TPB in taking action on climate change. And, um, I, I emphasized to other TPB members that I'd like to see us do more on this and to, to make sure that this is really something that we're thinking through in our decisions. Because a lot of times the decisions that the TPB makes on big road projects and infrastructure, um, projects like the Beltway, um, some members of the TPB are not really thinking, I, I don't think, about climate change as much as they need to be. And, um, this was a good, good opportunity to delve deeper and I know it's something everyone cares about. So I, I appreciated that opportunity and also want to thank a couple of residents in Ward Three who, um, reviewed some of the materials and offered their thoughts on it to me as well and really appreciate your assistance on that. Another item I think might be of interest to people is that the TPB staff has been developing an interactive map on the website of high-capacity transit stations throughout the region. Uh, I really encourage people to take a look at it. It is at www.mw cog.org backslash maps. And, um, really, it's kind of a fun thing to play around with. You can zoom in, you can zoom out, you can overlay, equity emphasis areas within the region, you can overlay housing targets within the region and, and really look at, um, some granular data. So I think this will be a really excellent tool and, um, hope we can utilize it here to an extent and utilize it regionally as well. And then finally, I, um, had an opportunity to, um, watch and take part in, um, the MDOT consultation, uh, last week with Montgomery County delegation. And there was some interesting, um, discussions about S H A, um, S H A's plans within Montgomery County. And, um, I thought, one quote I just wrote down and I wanted to share, um, I thought was really a positive thing to hear from, despite some of the, the budget challenges that I think S H A is facing, was that Greg Slater noted that he was strongly supportive of high-visibility crosswalks and pedestrian lead intervals and felt that both of those things were important and simple improvements that could be made without a lot of expense um, as we wait for longer-term projects to be possible. So I think that's something we should follow up with him on as we're considering and advocating for these changes for safety in the community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Councilman DiBala.
Yes, thank you. Um, just a couple of things. Uh, I've been doing walkabouts in different blocks and I, I had a great weekend. And this Saturday, I'll be in the Glazewood Devon Shear Larch area, um, around two o'clock, two to, one to two, one to three. So look for me there. Um, secondly, uh, thank you to the code enforcement folks. I've put you through a lot the last week or so, a lot of, uh, various issues coming up in different parts of the ward. And appreciate what the code enforcement staff do. Um, and, uh, thank you to the people who made public comment tonight. I would like to say that, um, uh, forming a public safety task force to look at racial justice issues in policing, uh, doing a comprehensive review of committees with an eye toward racial balance on committees may not be the kind of rapid change you seek, but it is the direction that, that I support and that this council's chosen. And I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a few things I wanted to mention, actually ask about. I know later this evening we have a session about the elections or update on the elections. And I think that's last, we may not get to it. So I, I did want to make sure we cover in that and if there's a quick answer now. Um, I have heard from a few people who, who still haven't gotten their local ballots yet and I understand that the process is unfolding and I think the date that we had told people was that if you didn't receive your ballot by, uh, yesterday's mail to, to reach out. So, um, I'm interested just in how many people the city is hearing from and what steps are being taken to address that. And as I said, if it's necessary to wait until, um, we do the update on elections later, that's fine. I'm just wondering how many people will stay up there to watch it. So it's one or two things that could be said now. I appreciate that.
If, if, if I may, uh, this is Jesse, Councilmember Kovar. If, if I may say, um, I think it's, um, we've got a number of people working on responding to, uh, all the people we are hearing from. We are working through every issue. Uh, we have identified some, uh, ballots that were sent out in the initial mailing that may have been sent in some cases to a mailing address as opposed to a residential address. And in some cases, that mailing address was not the most up-to-date thing on file. So we are working through each issue and, um, rest assured, uh, we'll be able to report on it all in the end, but.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And then secondly, completely different issue and, and maybe the city manager could respond on this. So the regulations for the changes to the tree ordinance are, uh, due within ninety days of, of passage and that's, we're getting up to that in another week or so. And I understand there's a, a plan for, I think, what amounts to an interim set of regulations with additional opportunity for members of the public and council to, to comment on them. But I wonder if you could say a few words about how that's going to work.
That's sure. The, um, the ordinance that set the tree ordinance, um, into place basically. the ordinance that set the tree ordinance into place basically requires them to be effective, I think, October 26th or 27th. It takes a long time to go through the administrative regulation process. The city attorney has drafted those regulations along with our Public Works Director. Those, what I have to have then is an announcement posted in the newsletter that says that the draft regulations are available for public review and comment. Then I hear from people, I make changes to them if there's a comment that makes, seems to be, you know, a useful correction or addition. Then you have to post the corrected final version of the regulations and have it identified in another newsletter. Under the city code, I'm able to do basically an emergency action. This is not a pandemic kind of emergency action, but it's a standard emergency action that allows for a 60-day process of having a regulations, and so I would be using that while we do the notification in the newsletter. The information, all the regulations will be posted online and with information about how to share anybody's comments. They implement very carefully and closely the kinds of comments and requests made by the council as you went through your lengthy process of the tree ordinance. So I don't think there will be anything that will surprise anyone, but I'm happy to hear if there are any suggestions.
And just to be clear, timing-wise, based on what you said, it sounds like then that early November newsletter and then maybe the early January newsletter would be the two?
That's right, and, you know, and, but the action that I will take is to basically use those regulations as effective regulations during the time when they're being reviewed. And this is to be able to implement the different kind of fee schedule that the council wanted to see, and some of the notice provisions that the council wanted to see that are in the tree ordinance.
So that means even though they're technically in what you might call draft form or a form where they could be changed further within the 60 days, they still will be in effect and implemented as of October 27th or whatever, the 90th?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And thanks also to those who spoke. I will say, you know, these are, there's a challenging set of issues connected to the, to the collective bargaining agreement and to the resident committees. We're trying to work through that. I think we'll be discussing all of those issues this evening. I feel that for myself and for our colleagues, we're committed to trying to address the structural racism that we see, and to the extent that it's embedded within any of our processes or requirements here in the city, that's something that we do want to address. It'll be an ongoing lengthy process, I hope. We'll be able to take some additional steps toward that or in that direction this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I just, let's see, Councilwoman DiBala touched on the purple line already. And the only thing I have is just to remind people that we have COVID testing at Psycho Church Parking Lot on Wednesdays from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I went this morning with my family just before 11:00, and we're in and out very quickly. You can walk up as well as drive through. So, and I think unless the deputy city manager corrects me, we are going to have this weekly on Wednesdays in the community. And you don't need insurance, you don't, free, the forms are easy to fill out. And, yeah, and hopefully we'll get negative results and move forward from there, but it was.
Question on that, did they tell you when you went how quickly the results are anticipated, or is that?
They said within five days, and I have been told that it is better to call than wait for an email. So it is not, is not rapid testing, but I think it's very convenient to have this in the community every Wednesday. And again, just to thank the deputy city manager for continuing to push on this over the last couple of months when we were able to get the pop-ups at the rec center in New Hampshire Avenue over the summer. I think that was a good start, but having put in place now regular testing in our community that's free, it's easy to use, is really important. So I just want to thank her for her persistence in making sure that this was set up, so. All right, turn it over to the city manager for her comments.
Thanks very much, and I also want to give my kudos to the deputy city manager. She's been very diligent and was over there today to make sure they were doing everything correctly. I will say that another point that has been made by Montgomery County is that you shouldn't feel guilty about going often. So if you need to get regular testing because of the kind of work that you do or the interactions that you're doing, there's no, there's no maximum number that you can get, so you can go back when you feel you need it. Just, I wanted really put out the message that people have to hunker down and be safe over the next two months, wear your mask, keep your social distancing, the numbers are ticking up, and I can, I'm getting, you know, I'm hearing of more and more positive tests, and your only way to keep us all safe is to do our individual parts. It's not fun, and we're tired of it, but please, please wear the mask, keep your distance. And the point to that is that we've got Halloween coming up, we've got Election Day coming up, we've got Thanksgiving coming up, and winter holidays, times when we want to gather together, and if you want to gather together safely, you need to be safe. Wear the mask, get tested, and, you know, and we'll make it through that way. In the same vein, we're not doing trick-or-treating this year, just a reminder, please don't go trick-or-treating. Please don't answer the door to trick-or-treaters. There's other fun ways to enjoy the holidays, enjoy Halloween. We've got wonderful information on our website under TKPK Halloween on our rec page. Please enjoy dressing up, decorate your houses. If you do put treats out for people, make sure they're out near the sidewalk on a table in an easy, single-package, grab-and-go kind of situation. Please don't encourage people to go door-to-door. We need to discourage that. We will have information later this evening about elections. I will tell you, the boxes, the collection boxes are busy. And so there's a constant flow of people putting in the boxes their ballots for either the presidential or the City of Tacoma Park ballots. I had some interesting questions. I had a woman a couple of days ago hurrying to put her mail-in ballot into the presidential box because she thought that the 20th was the last day to mail in or drop off ballots. That was the last day to request a mail-in ballot for you to complete, but she had heard it incorrectly. So if you've got a mail-in ballot, you have time to mail it in, you can drop it off in one of the drop boxes. I want to give a shout-out. I think the city clerk didn't really quite emphasize it enough. She and her team are going absolutely full blast at working. The phone is ringing constantly. Her staff, she's got some interns, are answering the folks that send in their email questions to elections@tocomoparkmd.gov, and we're solving problems or questions, and just really appreciate her hard work, and the staff that are working with her really are doing a great job, so I just want to give a shout-out. In the nature of shout-out, and I, it's timely actually, because we were talking Local 400 tonight a little bit, but we have the Police Department Annual Awards, which usually we have a get-together for that and fun award ceremony. That didn't happen this year because of the pandemic, but I want to give a shout-out to three of the awardees, particularly Hanuk Attikil, who is the Officer of the Year for 2019. Private First Class Hanuk Attikil was selected because of his dedication to duty and his significant accomplishments and contributions throughout the year. He began with the city in, for the Police Department in January of 2017. He worked in the Patrol Division, and now works in the Criminal Investigations Division. He has worked tirelessly in his assignment as a patrol officer. He was quick to volunteer for assignments when we had a deluge of theft from autos. And one of the things that they make a note of is that PFC Attikil is quick with a smile and has an upbeat attitude with everyone he comes into contact with. He's been the subject of many compliments from residents for his assistance, and so he's an excellent asset to the Police Department. I would just want to make mention, on a personal note, it's, it was very exciting to see Hanuk win this award. He's a hometown hero. And he grew up in Tacoma Park, he worked for the Rec Department, and then he was able to be successful in this dream to be a Tacoma Park Police Officer, and he really does make everyone's day when they're working with him. And so I'm just real thrilled, and I, you know, and it's also important that we have folks who speak Ahmariq that know how to really coordinate with the community, so kudos to him. We also have Daniel Bushman, the Civilian of the Year. He was a dispatcher since March of 2014, and is now a parking enforcement officer. He's excellent in his job, but he also is an active member of the peer support team. He makes himself available for call-outs involving officers in crisis, so appreciate that contribution to our police force, and so kudos to Daniel Bushman for being named Civilian Employee of the Year in the Police Department. And finally, a shout-out to Detective Sergeant Joseph Butler, Supervisor of the Year. Many of you know Joe Butler. He's been with the department for 22 years, the last 10 of them as a detective. He is awesome in his job as a detective. He closes 67% of his cases. He boosts staff morale with his sense of humor and easygoing manner, but where he really excels is in talking with victims, and in working with families to close cases and to address the issues that they have. And I have seen him in, at that, and it, it makes people feel comfortable that their issues are being addressed. Really thrilled to hear that he's being acknowledged, but I appreciate that he's being acknowledged as Supervisor of the Year. His peers nominated him for this position because of the efforts that he's had to help his subordinates grow in their positions. So really thrilled to have Joe Butler as Supervisor of the Year, and you know, in his free time, which he doesn't have because he spends it all working, he also does a good job running the grill whenever there's a quarterly cookout, so just everything about Joe Butler is a wonderful asset to our community as a, as a city, and so again, just wanted to praise our Police Department awardees. And I hope we get back to our regular police award banquet when we hear the real stories behind some of the cases that are held and, and the real work that they do to diffuse situations, so it's a it's, you know, many successful outcomes because of the, the care that our officers do. So that's all I have for this evening. Thanks very much.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our voting session. The first is the Second Reading Ordinance regarding principles of council compensation. We had the first reading ordinance last week. We did make some minor changes before the ordinance was moved, and I just want to, again, thanks Councilwoman DiBala for moving this through our process, and to also thank all the members who were part of the Council Compensation Task Force and all the work they did back over the winter and spring. And I would ask if someone would like to move the Second Reading Ordinance. Councilwoman DiBala moves, Councilmember Siemens second. Any questions or comments on this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Is that, that me go ahead? Yeah, thank you. I just had a couple of questions based on some questions that I received from resident, and I was wondering if Councilmember DiBala might be willing to just respond briefly if I, if I brought it up. So one of the questions that was, was raised was we say in a couple of spots that certain criteria, including the comparison to other jurisdictions, will no longer be part of the set of factors that goes into the determination of what the compensation should be, and the question that I got was that it doesn't state, but here are the things that will be taken into account. Now, I think in the whereas clause, that's addressed to some extent, and certainly within the within the code itself, the responsibilities of council members are laid out. I just wonder how you would see the criteria that would be ultimately used in, in making the decision. That's a understandable question.
I think the question has to do with what are the criteria for deciding, for, for the task force, the committee to recommend compensation levels for a future council, and as I understand it, the principles themselves are the criteria. That is the point of having principles. They guide the, the, the review, and to add into this some more criteria, which, which are basically already the ones that are listed, doesn't make a great deal of sense to me personally.
One of the other questions that came up was we talked about how the mayor should get a different amount than the council members, and I don't think this has come up before, but it, does anyone know if this came up? Is there a specific percentage difference, or is it just something that over time and there's been periodic cost of living adjustments, and so the two numbers are just, one's bigger than the other, but it doesn't have a particular calculation that has led to a precise difference between the two? Does anyone know if that's ever?
Councilmember Kovar, the, it's primarily set by the Council Compensation Committee, but there is the standard code language that increases by a certain percent, so if there may be a slight widening because of the that certain percent increase.
Over time, if one's bigger than the other.
But it's, it's very similar to what was originally proposed by the, by the last Council Compensation Committee that looked at that issue.
But also, if, if the, if the, if there's a new proposal potentially tied to this resolution to have higher compensation, you know, a bigger jump, which is one of the potential options, I assume at that point, we'd be re, potentially reconfiguring these numbers too, right, because?
I think the point with this is that, was to to give some overall structure to the next group of that would review these, so it's, it's to give them some flexibility in making those determinations at the time they're reviewing them.
Okay, thank you.
If I may say that the, the fact that the mayor's compensation level is higher than the council's is something that is not not required by any, by the charter or any other ordinance. It's a decision that's been made by past councils, and something that could be changed. It could be higher, lower, or the same as council members. I think everyone's acknowledged the fact that it should be higher because.
Yeah, just to be clear, I think it should clearly be higher. I just didn't know if the, the difference between the two was based on some calculation or just something that had grown up over time, that's all.
Right, and I think that's the answer. It's, it's been past council's decision, and it's fluctuated through the years.
Okay, thank you.
Great, any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember DiBala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Siri. Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Sorry, yes. Great, thank you. Next, we have the second reading ordinance approving the request of the committee on the environment to suspend its operations. Again, there were a number of changes that we made last week in the first reading ordinance. They reflected on what was posted on the city website. Would someone like to move this ordinance? Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second? Councilwoman Dibala, any questions or comments on this one? Councilwoman, sorry. Smith and then Circe.
I first would like to thank Colleen Cordis for her comments this evening. I appreciate my colleague, Councilmember Circe, for bringing to our attention last week about having the all white members, remaining members of the committee, making decisions for all the committees. I think that was something that should have been, you know, called out way before it got to council. So I appreciate Councilmember Circe for seeing that detail. I, you know, I, I talked to former councillor, councilmember Grimes about the committee and, you know, I had no problem if the committee disbanded because of, you know, the, these, these issues and particularly the issue that started the ball rolling on this. You know, we got to do better. If we're going to be better, you got to do better. You know, if, if racial equity, racial justice is going to be a reality, we are the ones that are in a position of power to actually make that happen. So, you know, right now, I don't know if I'm going to support this because, you know, I don't know if we're doing enough. We have to do more. If we don't do more, who, who is going to do more? So, thank you.
Councilwoman Circe?
Yes. So one question that still remains for me is the racial justice facilitator. And whether or not we are doing the other committees disservice by limiting the racial justice facilitator to the remaining members of the committee on the environment, even though they've suspended operations instead of providing the opportunity for perhaps others across different committees, particularly, you know, committee, current committee members of color who might be willing and interested in, in being a part of discussions around the racial justice and how to increase diversity. So that is one piece that is still a stickler for me. Can the city manager speak to how much we're currently paying for this facilitator? And what is the idea in terms of how long this particular group is expected to meet with the facilitator?
You know, I, I don't have a lot of information about that. I think, I think the work that she's done so far has been about $400 worth of work. But I would like to, I very much would like to have a broader use and approach with the facilitator because I think that that's, you know, there were some particular issues with this committee, which is why it started there. But certainly there is a discussion citywide about how the committees function and how to address the very stark kind of membership segregation that there is on the committees. And so I think there will need to be some conversations with the council members, probably after the next council forums, about how to best arrange that. But I personally want to find a way to use her well with a number of the different committees. And I would like to see that effective, but there's not an agreement with her at this point for that kind of approach.
So, so I'm inclined to say that I lean towards the elimination of section two and that we make this ordinance strictly about suspending the operations of the committee on the environment. And then we, the, the next council comes back together and makes sure that we're able to work into our next budget, the necessary resources, or if we have resources available, to bring back this racial justice facilitator to work with members in the committees, in the public, to really try to get down to the root of how can we improve diversity on our committees.
I hear that as a motion and I second that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. You know, I never know the rules. So I would like to, to, to move to strike section two of this ordinance.
I second that.
Okay, we have an amendment on the table. Any other?
Circe, I'm sorry, would you, do you also want to remove the third whereas clause that's associated with that? It's not necessary, but I'm just checking.
Yes, please.
This, all right, so the third whereas clause in section two, okay? Any comments or discussion on that? No, will the clerk call the roll on the amendment?
Councilmember Kovar? Am I muted? Sorry. Sorry about that. No, okay, Councilmember Kovar?
You are muted.
Not muted.
No.
Councilwoman Kovar's muted.
Muted.
You still talking though.
Yeah. Trying. I'm trying to unmute myself. So I, I was just actually looking at the text though too. So what, can we just say again, we're dropping the whereas clause and the resolve, both of which refer to the, the racial justice facilitator? Is that what the, what the motion is? Okay. And so that would mean that whether that continues will be decided at some future time. All we're doing at this point is saying that the committee is suspending its operate, or that we're suspending its operations. Is that, is that what we're saying?
Yes, providing for the racial justice facilitator.
So I'm, so we're voting right now to strike that, those two sections. All right, I will vote yes on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
I would like to vote yes with a comment and just say that I had previously supported having that in there for these members to continue that. But I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Circe that it makes more sense to broaden this so that all committees can take advantage of this training. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, I just want to say with Councilmember Siemens as well, the intent was to have this facilitator come in earlier in the summer when a number of the committee members were still involved. And given that folks have resigned from the committee, I still think this is something that is worthwhile for this committee and all our committees to go through. And I'm very glad that we've begun a relationship. We've had one before with this facilitator and I'm looking forward, hopefully that shall continue. All right, so the third whereas clause in the section two is struck. I see Councilmember Kostik and just Councilwoman Kostik. Did you have another comment?
Yeah, I had some questions about that and so I'm, I'm glad we resolved that. Thank you. I, I did just want to say, I, I think that it's clear that the committee on the environment is not our only committee that has many of these issues, that we do have clearly a lack of representative committees. And we do not have the emphasis across all of our committees on racial justice and equity and ensuring that we have representative and diverse committees. So I absolutely support suspending the operations of this committee. And I think as we move forward, we need to continue to look really critically at what we're doing with committees. I've been increasingly drawn to the model of some type of ambassadors, as we talked about in some of our previous meetings, where we have people going out into the community and talking with people about some of our initiatives and really getting some broader feedback from the community. I think that also has a lot of potential to ensure that we're not hearing from the same voices all of the time and that we bring people into conversations about issues that they might not have, you know, a strong draw to as, you know, someone who is necessarily working, for example, in the climate change realm, but who cares about climate change and is going to be impacted by both climate change and policies the city makes. And so I think that's, that sort of model I'd like to see more of. And I appreciate the former committee member who spoke to us a little bit about the, the, some of the issues that the committee experienced and appreciate that the committee members took action and have called for change based on recognizing that this, this all white committee was not going to be what we need in the community. And I think this is an important resolution and an important step in addressing those issues. So thank you very much.
Seeing no other hands, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay, our next item is, we have a couple of things regarding personnel. It was, they're all under the same agenda item. And the first was a resolution ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 400, and the city of Tacoma Park. We do have with us our labor attorney, Mr. Wozniak. Thank you for joining us. And our human resource person, I don't, is it manager director? I'm sorry. Tracy Smith. So thank you for joining our meeting tonight. And again, just if people were, oh, Councilmember Siemens, did you have your hand up from before? You're on mute. You're on mute.
No, I just put it up so I'd be first in line.
Okay. I saw, I think just to follow along with what we said at the top of the meeting, there's more information on the city website to address some of the quite, there were some about three or four questions that kept coming up over the last few days. So we wanted to make sure to get that information up for people on the, the website. So I don't know if I want to, I want to turn it back to the city manager to address some other things.
Sure. Well, if I might just note that the first, the first voting item is actually on the retirement incentive program. And so there's that. I, that.
Different on the agenda, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just, I have the agenda in front of me and it has first local 400, so. I'm sorry. It's all right. The first.
My agenda has it differently. Whichever way you want to do it is fine, mayor. If you'd like to start with.
We teed up the four, local 400, let's just.
That sounds fun. That sounds fine. So we spoke last week about the agreement that has been negotiated between city management and local 400 of the United Food and Commercial Workers. We do have our labor attorney with us, who can go over briefly the major provisions of that. We identified them in the, in the agenda package. We included in the agenda package the actual collective bargaining agreement with the red lines. And as you mentioned, there was additional information posted today. And so Eric, would you like to kick it off, the overview?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. Appreciate it. The agreement that we've negotiated or the modifications to the collective bargaining agreement that we've negotiated with Local 400, there are a few changes, which I'll summarize here. The agreement would run from July 1 of this year through June 30 of 2023. A three-year agreement with reopeners for wages in years two and three. So for fiscal years 22 and 23, and that's solely for wages. Naturally, the, the landscape will change between now and a year from now and a year beyond that. So that's the purpose of the reopeners there. The other economic items that we've negotiated with the union include section 28.4, which is about emergency pay. And what this section does is provides a two and a half times regular rate of pay when officers are required to work during inclement weather-related emergencies, solely for the time that the, the officers are required to work as determined by the city manager. This language mirrors language that is already in the existing collective bargaining agreement with ASME. It is also important, I think, to distinguish this sort of emergency situation that we're talking about here with pandemic-related emergencies, which hopefully happen less frequently. And that's not what we're talking about here. That would remain a pay that would be in the discretion of the city as situations arise. The next change is to 34.6 regarding military service. And what this change does is it puts into the agreement a paid leave for our officers who are members of the reserves or the military, one of the branches of the US military, for their annual training requirements. We built into this provision during negotiations, a requirement that the city be notified of when the training would occur so that we could deal with the logistics of scheduling officers and work around things to the best of our ability so that we are not left without coverage when needed. Moving on to section 43.1, this is a revision to existing language regarding field training officers. And so FTOs under the existing contract that expired on June 30 of this year, receive two paid leave days in exchange for working as a FTO. Regardless of the number of hours the officer worked as an FTO. And so we struck a balance here by revising the language to giving the $3 additional per hour work in the field training officer capacity. So it's, I think the upshot for this provision is that the additional compensation is tied to actually doing the specialized duty. 43.2 is a new section regarding technical pay. And what we've done here is agreed to provide a $200 stipend for up to five stipends. So that's $1,000 per year when an officer receives training and is certified in a, a finite list of, of skills and attributes that are beneficial to the city. And we've delineated in the agreement what those skillsets are. And if I pull up the section here, I can tell you what they are briefly. Bear with me one moment. So the, the categories of certifications that would entitle an officer to the additional $200 includes being certified by the Police Training Commission, in emergency response, honor guard, advanced accident reconstruction, or as a firearms instructor, defense tactics instructor, and, and some hostage negotiator and some other very specialized trainings. And so that's what we were doing with the modification to section 43.2. As Susie referenced earlier in the meeting this evening, the, the wages that we agreed to for this fiscal year are a 1.5% increase, which is about a step increase on the fiscal year 20, so last year's grid. No increase based on evaluations or, or other cost of living cost increase. And there had been a question about the modification to section 44.3. This is not an economic change, but it is to write, to align the terms that we use in the collective bargaining agreement and the pay scale with the current. with the current scale that we use, the language, because we only do a full negotiation every three years, reflecting what we used to do and not what we do currently. So those are, those are the substantive economic changes that we've agreed to after months of negotiations with Local 400. Happy to entertain any questions on those or other topics related to the contract. Or Susie, if there was something else you wanted me to address?
No, I mean, I think there were some discussions about, maybe you can just mention, if, if, for example, LEOBR is repealed at the state level, what impact that has on our officers and the process for our officers. I think we addressed earlier that there's not an issue about changing the, the organization or the number of officers with this contract.
Absolutely. And so, that's right. The, the collective bargaining agreement has a number of provisions that are not atypical in these sorts of things, whether we're talking about a police unit or another type of collective bargaining unit. Here with whether there's a financial situation that requires the city to consider in the future reducing its headcount, or if there's just a change in direction from a policy perspective, perhaps based on the task force, that changes are necessitated or desired. There are a couple of things we have to look at. Foundationally, the Management Rights Clause in the agreement gives the city to control its operations and make personnel decisions. The set, the step beyond that is looking at whether there are specific provisions of the contract that impact what we can do and when we have to do it. With respect to reductions in force, for example, the city has to provide notice before implementing a reduction in force. But under the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, a reduction in force is not tied to a financial existency, a financial crisis as a prerequisite for conducting a reduction in force. That is to be contrasted with a layoff, which, under the terms of the agreement, it's not a no-layoff provision. That's not what it is. And, and I want to correct that understanding. What it is, is saying that a layoff, as that term is used specifically in this contract, is, is one that can only occur if there is a documented financial crisis. So if there's a documented financial crisis, that's the prerequisite for the city to do a layoff of members within the Local 400 bargaining unit. Where the city is not constrained from doing a request or a reduction in force absent a, absent a financial existency. So that's a key distinction, I think, to make. As positions become vacant, the city has options to not fill those positions or to recalibrate and right-size things as well. As, you know, we're being flexible and nimble as we're reacting and responding to societal changes and budgetary constraints. And so that's another option that we have as well. I want to address LEOBR, but I am on this Zoom from my office and our alarm automatically turns on at nine if I'm not standing by the, the, the keypad. So can I step away for like 45 seconds and come right back?
Absolutely.
I apologize for that and I will be right back.
We'll time you.
Apologize for that.
No, no, go, 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 go.
You don't want to call the police.
So I, I, I think I've tried to do a good job of sending on information to council and posting information about the details of this collective bargaining agreement. It's a very basic collective bargaining agreement. You compare it to ASME when you will have that before you in a few months. It's, this is a fairly standard and easily understood document. And I also want to note that while all negotiations with labor unions have some tension, I really appreciate that we have been able to work constructively with Local 400 and they were very understanding of the financial situation that we're all in during this pandemic. And I appreciate that they had really healthy discussions with us about the best approach. So I do want to acknowledge their work. And I see that Mr. Wozniak has returned.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Can you ask any other questions that you may have?
Great. Well, I know councilmember Siemens really wanted to go first, so we will let him go first tonight to ask his questions and his comments.
But thank you, mayor. And yeah, I, you know, I appreciate the people who came.
Oh, we lost you. Your audio just cut out.
Well, I have no reason. I have no.
Nope. Now you're back.
Good. Glad, because I don't know how to fix it if it's broken. Anyways, I appreciate the people who came and spoke at the public comment session tonight. But I, I would say I agree with some of the things they said and, and some of the things I don't think that this council has taken a position on. And, and certainly I don't agree with some of the things that, that they seem to be contending that we had committed to. So with that being said, I would just like to say that I certainly do appreciate our looking into the law enforcement officers bill rights. For many years, I have contended that that's been a problem because it is limited to transparency to the extent that councils, council members have been unable to really do the oversight job that we needed to do with this department. But saying that, I want to be clear that I, I don't think that we have problems today with excessive use of force or anything else. But I think it's important that the council be able to perform the oversight that we are charged to do as elected members of the policy body. You know, there's been other things that I think through the years that I have advocated for, you know, even changing the color of police cars or changing the color of police uniforms, downsizing the size of the vehicles, just different things that I thought would make the police department be more in line with the character of Tacoma Park. But there's a lot of things that I, that I'm optimistic that the task force on rethinking of leasing and public safety are going to be addressing and providing information to this body so that we can see what changes make sense for Tacoma Park and improve public safety. I'm skeptical that defunding the police department is, is a good idea. And it's certainly not something you would do in one swipe overnight. But I certainly thank Mr. Wozniak and the others involved in these negotiations because we need to keep doing business and, and we need to have a task force to see, make recommendations to the council on what we can do to improve things. So for those reasons, I'm going to vote for this. And I'm not sure, we've got so many items on this list in this, in this particular agenda item. I'm not sure which other ones I'm saying that I'm also supporting. But basically, I think we're, we're headed in the right direction. I thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you for the overview of the contract. One question I have is, the city manager mentioned officers who are serving in the National Guard. Does that include non-commissioned officers or is it just officers that have the opportunity to change their schedules and?
It has to do with any of our police officers who need to report for training for, if they're in the reserves.
Okay. All right. That's fine. And is there a particular reason why we have to take this up tonight? We can't take it up after the elections?
There is a couple of reasons. One is that the direction to have this CBA was from this council over the course of many months. And so it's appropriate that this council take action on it. The other thing is that we have had our officers waiting for some time. They voted on this in August and I would like to have a response to them. We are about ready to go into re-opener for the FY '22 wages. October is the date when we start setting meetings to have the negotiations for the next set of wages. So it is appropriate that it be taken care of tonight. I ask that.
Okay. And there was an email that said that if there are changes at the state level regarding law enforcement, they would not automatically have any impact on our contract because the contract has been ratified. That's correct?
That's correct. I mean, it, that's correct. And, but it also, we're able to operate with LEOBR or without it, the way this contract is written.
Okay, great. Right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Circe.
Great. Thank you all so much for answering a number of questions prior to tonight's meeting. I do want to confirm a couple of things. So for me, my priority is making sure, one, we're not subjecting ourselves or committing ourselves to paying an exorbitant amount of money, right? Especially in light of what we're planning to do in terms of kind of rethinking things. And then second, that we have flexibility built in the contract that would enable us to really take and move forward with recommendations that may come from the task force. So let me just take the first one. Are we spending a lot of money? So right now, we're at a 1.5%. And I know that some folks in the comments, and I appreciate all of the comments that residents have raised, have asked the question of, we're, we're giving them this huge salary increase. Can someone tell me what the ECI or what the anticipated COLA? I, I know what has just dropped in terms of, for social security, is at 1.3. Do we know what's the upcoming, what the upcoming ECI is going to be in terms of cost of living?
No. So generally, when we're working with setting wages, we look at the ECI, which is the Employment Cost Index for wages for state and local government employees from the previous December, so December 2019. That percent was 2.5%. We are not including that in this contract.
Right. So basically, we would be at a rate that is well below what the ECI was in 2019 and only 0.2% above what is currently the cost of living increase in 2021 for social security beneficiaries. So I just, I, I know that may seem like a lot of gobbledygook, but I want people to understand that the 1.5% that we're talking about in the grand scheme of things is, is not a lot of money and is actually on par with the rate of inflation, just so that people kind of understand that, because I know that there's been a lot of talk about that. And we're also not including hazard pay for the pandemic. Correct. Right. So again, just to help folks at home to put this in perspective, we're talking about a 1.5%. Currently, the rate that's projected for cost of living for social security beneficiaries is 1.3. And we're talking about officers that are not getting hazard pay in the middle of a pandemic. And if you watch CNN or Fox News or whatever your news preference is, you know that we're going to be entering into another wave. So I just want to make sure that folks kind of understand when we're talking about cost, what, what the 1.5 really means. So in my mind, that's, that's a more than fair amount when we're talking about the actual salaries. And then I, I know that folks might have mentioned the canine unit quite a bit. So I want to make sure that I understand the terms of the contract as it relates to canines. So in, in my, you know, novice read of the contract, it, it seems as if there's a pay differential to those officers that are part of the canine unit. But should, let's say, we decide to not have any additional dogs, would that mean that those staff would still be paid? Can someone explain how it wouldn't? So in our budget, just to, I'm trying to make sure I'm, I got it right. In our budget, the actual care of the animals is a part of a supply. They're not necessarily considered like personnel, so to speak. So if we were to make a decision about, or the, the task force were to make a decision about disbanding the canine unit, right, then that wouldn't necessarily have to go back to the, to the, to the union because we're basically getting rid of the dogs and a differential. We're not changing that person from being an officer, so to speak. Does that question make sense?
That's right. So there's, so it's only if you have a dog as part of a canine unit, then you have the, that differential for that, for that responsibility. But if we do not have the dog, if we do not have the canine unit, there's no differential paid. And if we do not have the dogs, then we're not going to be expending budgetary amounts for their care and the supplies and all of that.
Right. And currently, we only have one dog. Thank you. And then I also just want to make sure, because I think that there's also, you know, perhaps a little misunderstanding in terms of how we may be able to move towards an agreed-upon model. So after the task force meets, and there's lots of recommendations on different approaches that we may be able to take in terms of addressing some of the, the social service needs in the community and kind of re, rethinking things and working with the chief. I know that mental health and crisis units is a big part of that and trying to get some pilots up. We could feasibly.
We may go four or five months without having someone leave. I mean, it's, but it's, it's not a long time between those. We either have people who choose to leave, we have people who retire, we have people who get hurt. And so there's a variety of, you know, reasons for us not to have them with our staff.
Okay. So it's, it's feasible to believe that once we're at a point where we have an agreed-upon model that we want to try and we kind of have a better idea of, you know, how many people, whether they're social workers or whatnot, we would need, we should, just through natural attrition, be able to address that FTE if need be. It's a lot of assumptions there, but that's a possibility. I just want to make sure.
I actually think that's, I actually think that's the likely way that would be handled. I think it's a very feasible approach. And the way that you have the schedules for the public safety task force is to give you some advice during the budget process. And that's an appropriate time particularly to make some of those decisions.
Great. And I think that's one of the reasons why the council really pushed to try to get the task force up and running and trying to schedule some of the recommendations so that they could happen around the time that we're having discussions about the budget. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for, for allowing me to kind of think out loud. I appreciate all of the work that you all are doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Circe. Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you. I know you addressed the, the question about layoffs, but I do just want to go back to that because I, I do think there's a sentence in there that says, "The employer agrees not to lay off any officers during the life of this agreement unless there is proof of legitimate documented fiscal crisis." And, you know, there's a lot in the contract that is a little confusing and, and jargony, and that is not, and it really sticks out as something that is like, whoa, wait a minute. This is concerning because we do want to be able to make changes to the department and not be restricted by this, by this contract. So what I wanted to ask is, I, I, it's, make sure I'm understanding correctly. There's the reduction in workforce, which we have authority to make, and that is separate from layoffs, which would be focused on a fiscal constraint.
That's correct.
But one of my questions is, 13-7, related to reduction in workforce, says, "In the event an officer is to be laid off due to reduction in the workforce." I think that, that to me is confusing because then it's the same terminology as we're using in 13-8 where we talk about layoffs. So can you verify that that, those are just still separate things, even though the wording is the same?
Yeah. And, and that's a very fair and a good question. And I, I don't know the genesis. And I don't know the genesis of the language getting into the contract in the first place. It happened over, over a decade ago. However, when you look at thirteen point seven and thirteen point eight, when you read them together, they are meant to be, and they are in fact separate provisions. So although the term layoff or laid off is used in thirteen point seven, it's used in the context of a reduction in force in which a financial exigency is not a prerequisite, distinguished from how layoff is used in the very next section, where that is the actual prerequisite. So yes, they use a similar terminology, but they are different for practical purposes and how we could proceed moving forward.
Thank you. And then with regard to layoffs, then, I guess one of my questions is, what other situation would layoffs happen? I mean, I sort of associate layoffs with fiscal crises in general or some need to downsize. So I'm sort of trying to figure out what other, what is this clause protecting against that, that isn't, that would otherwise be allowed if that clause weren't there?
And that's another good question. And I think it's, it's almost belt and suspenders to make clear that the layoff provision in the agreement is meant to apply solely when, hey, look, we see the fiscal cliff approaching and we've got to make drastic changes. So from the union's perspective, they want their members to be protected so that we're not making decisions willy nilly or without a demonstrable reason to do so in the layoff scenario. Now, we still have to give notice under the reduction in workforce scenario, but we don't have that prerequisite. I, I don't see another scenario that comes to mind other than a financial cliff or thirteen point eight, the layoff provision. You have a host of reasons that could apply for thirteen point seven. It could be we want to move a headcount from one type of role to another based on priority shifting or based on needs because we see an influx in one area and a decrease in another.
And just to make sure that shifting could occur from police department to other non-police department function, right? But you're not saying just within the police department, right?
That, that's correct, right? Because all thirteen point seven is, is covering is the reduction. It's not the reallocation. That would go back to the management rights provision that you have in this contract as well as in the ASME contract that gives you the right to make operational decisions and run the organization.
Thank you. Thank you. That's really helpful. And I think just as we move forward, I think we should just take note of some of the things that we have discovered sort of through this process that are confusing and have those, have that information to be able to talk about and understand so we don't keep asking the same questions. And maybe, maybe the language in the future can be tightened up when there are renegotiations. In terms of my own viewpoint on this, I will say I've struggled a bit with what, what action I think is appropriate on this. My, my initial thought when I saw this was, you know, we're shifting funds and we're, we're talking about shifting funds, and I support shifting funds out of the police department and into other services like mental health services, social services in general. And so the idea of then having an increase in our wages, you know, did, did, did and does strike me as concerning. At the same time, I do think Councilmember Circe's point regarding this being a cost of living increase is, is very, is a very helpful way to think about this. And I also, you know, through thinking through the way that we want to shift funds, to me, it seems we want to do that in a targeted way and a really thoughtful way, not, not to defund. And, and I think, I think we do need to move towards defunding, but it's not going to happen instantly. And so not to defund in the process some of the things that are working. Because I think that we're, we're going to have a long process where we work through this. And in the meantime, we need to make sure that the officers we have who are doing the work that we want them to be doing in the community and our, and our newer officers, as we talked about before, who were recruited for this reason, within the structure we have, are, are being paid appropriately. And so I, I think, given that, I am planning to support this, but I also think it's been really useful to look at this critically. And I appreciate the comments that were made in the, in the public comment period tonight and some of the comments I've received from a number of residents about this action. And it underscores for me the need for us to take action with the task force quickly to do those shifts and to make sure that we're doing it thoughtfully. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Kostic. Next, we have Councilwoman DiBala.
Yes, thank you. A lot of what I was going to ask has already been asked. I want to second Councilmember Circe's suggestion that we want to make sure we don't do anything that locks us in, that we have decided to take a broad approach to, to, to bring on a task force that will look at public safety issues and advise the council on what to do. And so, so rather than jump ahead of that and make a lot of little decisions right now or even a couple of big ones, I would like that group to have its opportunity to do what we, what we want, what we're asking them to do. At the same time, I want to make sure we're not somehow locking ourselves in to, to limit what they can consider. So I've heard a fair amount already about RIFs versus layoffs and, and not limiting the ability to restructure or to reduce the number of police officers if that's the direction that, that the task force goes in. I've heard about the grievance procedure. The one question that I still have is on grievance contract procedures, are they more or less strict then? Or are they just different than the LEOBR? So if LEOBR goes away, we should all be so lucky, then we'll still have the contract grievance procedure in place for the officers covered by the contract. So there's nothing that needs to be adjusted, but is that set of grievance procedures, contract grievance procedures, more generous, more strict? What does that look like comparatively?
Sure. So I, I think a helpful way to, to answer this question is to understand that because the legislature decided back in the seventies to have an LEOBR in Maryland, the, the courts have, Maryland's courts have said that LEOBR is the exclusive process for discipline, and that, and that's important, discipline.
Okay.
Discharge, discipline. So the LEOBR process, that, that is the process until it's not. And we don't have the ability to say it's not, given the way the courts have interpreted LEOBR over the past several decades. There is a contractual grievance procedure in, in the, in the CBA, which has a fairly typical three-step grievance process, you know, informal, take it to your next supervisor, take it to the chief, so on and so forth. And then they can, the union or the city can seek arbitration. So that exists now, and it, we didn't modify it. It would continue to exist. It's not used by officers in the bargaining unit for discipline because of LEOBR. If LEOBR were to go away in full, what would happen is the contractual grievance process is what officers would use. And so in cases of discipline, we would expect that more officers would go through the arbitration, grievance and arbitration process that's set forth, and, and the particular provisions are Article five and fifteen of the collective bargaining agreement. Now, we could further modify that down the road through negotiations, but it's, it's a tried and true grievance and arbitration process that outside of the police context works honestly quite well in the labor realm. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it did. A couple more questions and points. First, I want to just back up and thank you for being here and for answering a lot of the questions that council members have posed to you over the last couple of days, which you're getting, is getting a recap of now as we're talking about it. I had a specific question about technical pay, and, and I wanted to ask generally about three years. So historically, these have been three-year contracts. And I'm, as I am understanding it, there's not things in here as proposed that would limit the, the task force from doing its job. And so in that's, but just for the sake of argument, if this were a one-year agreement, not a three-year agreement, what, what would that look like? We would have to go back to the union, and how would that play out?
If, if this were a one-year agreement, we would do, every year, we'd be negotiating anything within the four corners of the collective bargaining agreement, which is different from what we do now with the, a three-year agreement solely with reopeners as to wages in the second and third years. Some, sometimes both the government employer and the union do a three-year contract for everything. But that, that creates a lot of difficulties because none of our crystal balls work in terms of finances in particular. So we, one, we'd be at the table every year talking about anything and everything. And so with this contract, we have, there is a lot of room. And again, I don't know what the task force is going to recommend, but there's a lot of room, I would think, to implement recommendations, whether it has to do with the, the, the construct of the workforce or other things not governed by the agreement. Most of what you see in this agreement has to do with leave and added benefits, very traditional labor topics that are, so that I believe the recommendations that you're likely to see are going to be outside the scope of the agreement.
And if I might, the, the elements that the task force would be dealing with would be for the entire police department, not just the members that are below the level of sergeant. So it's more appropriate to think of it as, as a police department item, not a collective bargaining agreement item.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, you know, I, I think my experience with Local four hundred, and I, I believe the others who are on the city's negotiating team would echo this, is that you have a very active partner who's willing to dialogue in these conversations, both from the union representative to the officers who are on the team. And I, I just think that's an important point to make as well. They, they fully grasped the unfortunate circumstances we were dealing with, with the pandemic.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. And my comment on the technical pages briefly is when I first read it, I, my eyebrows went up, but I see that it is limited in the sense that there's only so many times that a, an officer is eligible for technical pay allowance. So it's not unlimited, it's not unlimited in the number or the, or the number of years or the number of types of technical pay that someone draws. And I just would like to point that out for anyone who hasn't gotten as far as reading Article forty-three. I think, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Smith, is that your, an old hand up or new one?
Sorry, that's old again.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. And thanks for all the questions, Mr. Wozniak. And I think you've been asked some similar questions repeatedly, and I may do that again myself because there's a couple of points I'm not clear on. But first, I just wanted to ask you about the reopeners, which you referred to. So I understand that's just for pay and not for other aspects of the agreement. And so does that automatically happen or only upon request by one of the negotiating partners? And if someone requests it, are the others obligated to, to then agree to discuss? If you can talk about that a little bit.
Sure. The, the, per the contract, the, you're supposed to request the re opener. And that has in fact happened for fiscal year twenty-two. And then you, you bargain prior, in a perfect world, prior to budget so that, you know, you can help shape things and get the, the feedback and input. If some, if a party to the contract requests to bargain during the re opener, it is inappropriate to refuse to bargain.
But if they can't reach an agreement at a certain point, does it just stay where it currently is?
If, if we were to fail to reach an agreement and we're reached, we're at impasse, what would happen is we would likely either keep trying or there are things like the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service, which provides free mediation. They're quite effective and good at their jobs to help get us to the ending point. One of the principles of collective bargaining, as I don't mean to say something that you already know, is that we can't be required as a city to agree to something that we're not comfortable agreeing to, nor can they. So you keep trying and make the sausage, you know? And we've been successful doing that in the past, and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to do so in moving forward.
But, but so the, the reopening would presumably be about something like the 1.5% pay increase. But so let's assume for a moment that this agreement goes through, and they've got the, the, the members who are covered by this, the members of the union, get a 1.5% increase at the end of the first year. If it isn't reopened, is it a further 1.5% increase or is it just
Councilmember Kovar, that's, that's a negotiation. That's, we can't talk about that here. But what is important and what I brought up and explained last week as well as in our discussions with the, with the two labor unions is that we're looking holistically at a multi-year approach to being careful with funds, knowing that we've got several years to look at. So that's why, that's why there's not just this collective bargaining agreement before you. There's a retirement incentive program, there's a, you know, we're having negotiations with ASME. We're looking at the appropriate situation that we are in this year. And then the reason that we have the each opener is that as we learn new fiscal information, then it may make a difference. So we may say, no, this, or yes, that, or whatever, and that goes at the table. And the reason that we have these three openers is so that we can take advantage of new fiscal information on the situation that we're facing at the time. We can't predict at this point what it would be for next year.
Sure. So what about, and I know we've talked about this a bunch tonight, but this layoff versus RIF piece, and I just want to run through that one more time for my own benefit. I appreciate what's been said before about it. I just want to make sure I really got this. So a reduction in force, I'm going to ask this, and you can tell me if this is correct, whether that's Ms. Wozniak or, or Mr. Wozniak. A reduction in force can happen in the discretion of the city for a variety of purposes. And one of those could be the task force recommends to us, for example, that the, the number of police officers be reduced by two or whatever the case may be, and two people be hired to provide other kinds of social services or mental health services, for example. And if the council, the next council thought that's a great idea, we could do that and reduce the number of officers who are covered by this agreement. And this agreement wouldn't prevent that from happening. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. But so a layoff then is something different because a layoff is you're, you're being told not to come to work, but you might be brought back. Is that the distinction between a layoff and a RIF or not necessarily?
The layoffs, the layoffs has more, has more to do with finance, financial issues. And, and part of the reason that, you know, we, for example, the city doesn't do furloughs. We don't have enough people to make any money off of furloughs. If we were under, we did do layoffs of, not of police officers, but we did do layoffs in, in twenty twelve. We laid off sixteen people. You know, it was like twelve FTEs. Those, you know, that's done under, you know, a, a financial situation that, you know, makes very difficult discussions. But I think when we're, you know, one of the important things here is to think about, you know, are we responding to an immediate fiscal crisis? Or are we looking comprehensively at how we're moving forward, both financially and service way in, and in, in how we provide services? And that's where you may use a reduction in force or you may have a reorganization. Though, that's what all that's about. So I think, you know, I am not in a situation, I, we are not in a fiscal emergency. But we are being extremely cautious and careful and protective. But we are being extremely cautious and careful and protective of the city's finances this year and over the next few years with this approach. And it's also being respectful of our employees who are working in a really difficult time. So, you know, I think the, our, the RIFs, you know, is really if you're thinking a different way of service, layoffs are if we have to save money immediately and we have to like show that, that we just don't have those funds.
If somebody leaves for either of those two reasons, once they aren't working for us anymore, there's no real difference in terms of what's happened to them. Is that, is that right? I mean, if you get laid off or you get riffed, are you in the same situation?
You don't have a job with us.
Right. Okay. Um, so, uh, two other questions I had. So on the LEOBR, I, I saw that the state, um, House of Delegates, their little, um, their own task force recommended a number of changes. That just was made formal within the last day or two, and they did recommend getting rid of it completely. And so it's conceivable that could happen, right? And, um, there are some provisions in, I guess it's Article 15 on discipline, where you know, after a certain point, X number of years, negative information can be r- removed from somebody's personnel record, et cetera. And in some cases, they're minor things. In some cases, they, they may be more serious. And so if LEOBR were to be just completely repealed, those kinds of things, I believe is what everybody has said, would still remain in effect, right? And then they would potentially be, if, if, if there were such incidents, they would be used more than they really are now. They, they, it doesn't really, there's no real meaning. There's very little meaning for them now because LEOBR is there. If LEOBR is gone, then these things rise to the fore a little bit, right?
That, that's correct from the grievance perspective, yes. Uh, the reason we don't see officers go through the contractual grievance process when it comes to discipline is because of LEOBR. However, we have a process in the agreement that we would utilize more and officers would utilize more if LEOBR went away. With respect to personnel files, if LEOBR goes away, the language in the contract still applies because it's in our agreement with the union. Um, we think of LEOBR mostly as a as setting forth procedural requirements for officer discipline by the department. And it governs everything from the outset, the notice of the, of the allegation, the complaint, through the investigatory process, how long things can be brought, and then disposition of those, of the investigation through a hearing board and the chief's imposition of discipline and an appeal to the circuit court. If LEOBR goes away, we don't have that process anymore. There's no appeal to the circuit court. There's no hearing board. It's inform, it's internal to the city until you get to the arbitrator. And then an arbitrary, let's say, an officer challenged a, a discharge, for example, to an arbitrator. Whereas under LEOBR, if we didn't like that outcome, the city could go to the, the circuit court or vice versa, the officer could. It's very difficult to overturn an arbitrator's decision. But that would be the, that's the contractual mechanism.
Well, but so one of the things that we've heard a lot about, not with respect to Tacoma Park, but in other jurisdictions, maybe they don't have the same kind of state law, is that there are components of collective bargaining agreements that can make it more difficult to address incidents that might occur connected to some of the, you know, awful sorts of things we've seen around the, the country where black people have been killed or, or otherwise mistreated by, by the police. And so, I mean, I, I'd like
No, not in this contract.
Well, I'd like to just hear like from the city manager or the chief how that is, I mean, you're saying that's just irrelevant if we lose the LEOBR. I, I mean, that's really what I'm asking. I want to understand that.
It's, Chief, do you want to?
It, it is. Um, you know, the, the, these are, are, if, if the LEOBR is abolished, this is just putting parameters in place for officers to have due process. It is not going to impede my ability to discipline officers. There are other jurisdictions, Montgomery County, that have through collective bargaining affected the ability of the chief to implement punishment and discipline officers. This is absolutely what not is not in this agreement. It's simply spelling out a process which Garrett can comment, but I believe this process is used outside of police departments that gives due process to our officers. But it by no way impedes my ability to discipline and or terminate problem officers.
I concur with Chief.
Last question, just on the police pension, any impact of this on the police pension?
Very small. There's a small 1.5% increase in pay, and so that would be as you calculate pension, it makes a slight difference.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Siemens, did you have another?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And I'm sorry that I, um, I put my hand up so early and I went first, and then I didn't hear the benefit of what everybody else was saying, so I cleared the comment of those at that time. But I, I do think
That's why I always go last.
The, uh, I think the conversation tonight by the council has been healthy. But with all due respect, I think we've kind of drifted from the, uh, contract in front of us in a lot of cases to kind of speculation about, you know, what decisions that the future council might make based on the task force results. You know, there's things like the LEOBR. I have been really upset with that through the years because it has been so limiting uh, on, like I said earlier, the transparency. I, I do want to say though, that, um, I have full confidence in Chief Duvall. He is, um, you know, demonstrated since he's been here, uh, you know, the real, um, humanitarian concern that, uh, that, you know, officers be held accountable. This has not always been the case, uh, but I don't think there's a, a big risk in, um, in moving forward with this and, and, you know, with the LEOBR, the being, um, kind of the governing body for complaints. And I, I know that the, uh, the task force, I can imagine that that's one of the things they're going to look at and make recommendations is the, uh, you know, the state delegates are at this point, uh, looking at that and what might be changed to make that better for us. But after hearing tonight's discussion, I also want to just take a minute and reassure the, uh, officers, uh, that, you know, all this talk about RIFs and layoffs and, and, um, all the other terms. You know, this is, uh, as somebody said earlier, this is making sausage. You know, it's, uh, you talk, everybody's looking at things, brainstorming, uh, thinking of things, um, you know, from different angles, but these aren't decisions that are being made at this point in time. And I truly believe that, uh, it is, uh, going to be the council, uh, the next council that's going to hear what's, um, and what the advice is from the, um, from the task force. And I think there are probably going to be changes. They're going to be to the benefit of public safety here in Tacoma Park. But it's unimaginable to me that, uh, that we're going to be doing away with the, uh, having any police within the city limits. Uh, you know, I, th- those are all the things that people, um, you know, different people have different opinions and, and, um, we're going to listen to all those opinions and, and, uh, at some point make some decisions. But for right now, I can tell you that personally, I am very happy with the, uh, the officers that we have now, the changes that Chief Duvall has made and, and there are things that, uh, that I'd like to see different. And, um, you know, I'll be arguing for those things along with the, the rest of the council, but for right now, you know, I appreciate the awards that were given, you know, uh, Joe Butler and, and, and all the, the others that, um, that received awards. I, you know, I don't get to talk to dispatchers as often as I get to talk to others because they stay in that little cage, but, uh, so I don't know that individual as well. But, you know, I really appreciate the work you guys are doing and, and everybody else in the department. Please, uh, don't be disheartened by, uh, in the fact that you're able to, to listen to these discussions. Thank you.
Great. Um, thank you, Councilmember Siemens. And I, I just want to say thank you to, um, the residents who over the last couple of months, um, I've been talking to and getting really into, um, not just our CBA, but learning a lot about collective bargaining agreements with, um, police departments around the country. Um, and I just, I want to thank our, uh, the work of our delegation, particularly, uh, David Moon and State Senator Will Smith, um, as they work on these issues. I really do hope that, uh, we get the repeal of the LEOBR, um, in, in Annapolis. And I just want to underscore one thing, um, Mr. Wozniak, that we talked about before, not to ask you the same question five times, but, um, if the LEOBR does go away, um, one of the things in the testimony I gave, um, in Annapolis that, uh, we talked about is having officers treated the same as other, um, people who work for, for the government in terms of like how grievances are taken care of and other, and not provided, um, as they are now under LEOBR, uh, sort of special rights that are different from others. So is it my understanding from what you said before that if LOBR, the LEOBR did get repealed and went away, that are, that what we have in place now basically does treat our officers the same as other public employees?
One slight modification to how you said it, and that is other public employees subject to a collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah. Thank you very much for that clarification. Okay. Thank you. That's, that's helpful. I just wanted to make sure I was correct in, in that. Um, so, um, thank you. And I, um, just want to, um, thank the police chief and, and our officers and just want to share with, uh, uh, also the Councilmember Siemens, all the good wishes for those, uh, who were acknowledged tonight for their good work. Um, and, uh, and I, and I do say like, you know, particularly seeing, um, uh, Hanuk, um, Officer Adikil, uh, yet Officer of the Year, it does, it's great to see that, um, seeing, having seen him work in our rec department, going through school and going through the department. So, um, and one of the things that I think Councilwoman Seersey talked about too was, you know, we've talked about having our officers stay in the community, have them here. And that means making sure they do get cost of living increases if we want more, you know, and probably more than that, but right now we're doing, um, the 1.5. And so I think as we're looking for the moment at, um, the police officers we have now, um, we need to also acknowledge the fact that, um, they have families, they have, um, you know, bills to pay as well. Um, and so I'm glad we're able to do this, um, this year. Um, and I don't see any other hands, so I'm going to ask if someone would like to move the resolution. Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second? Councilwoman Seersey, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk call or?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Seersey?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know which one you have next.
The approving retirement incentive program next.
So the, so the next, I went through this last week. Um, this is a, I actually probably have the authority to just do this, but I wanted to have the council, as a resolution, identify the terms of a, um, retirement incentive program for this year. This would offer a, an amount, um, of $750 per year of employment with the City of Tacoma Park. And an option to continue with the city's health insurance for the retiree for up to three years if under age 65. For those members of the city government who are eligible for retirement and who are not members of the senior leadership team, which is primarily department heads. I, this is part of my comprehensive approach to personnel, uh, costs and, um, and rightsizing and kind of fitting given the pandemic, and I urge your approval.
Great. Anyone have any questions or comments on that before I ask for it to be moved? Sorry, I just lost the. Okay, um, seeing none, would someone like to move the resolution approving retirement incentive program?
Don't move.
Councilmember Smith, do I have a second? Councilwoman Dibala, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Seersey?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution approving fiscal year 2020 wage adjustments for non-management, non-union represented staff.
And again, I went over this last week. There are 12, uh, such staff, um, that are not in management positions. They, um, the wage, uh, proposal is to provide them a 1.5% increase, retroactive to July 1, with no additional pay for those who receive distinguished on their evaluations. And, um, this is a group that has overwhelmingly worked really hard during this pandemic. And I strongly urge, uh, you to also support this action.
Great. Any questions? Yes, Councilwoman Seersey.
And, and these are the same terms as what we just discussed with the Local 400, correct?
Yes.
In terms of, um, ECI?
Yeah, no ECI. Yeah.
No ECI. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dibala?
Chair somewhere. There it is. Um, follow, uh, following on that, no, that none of the other provisions about change, any, any changes in benefits or any of that other stuff, this is just about, this is my question, this is just about the wages, just about the salaries, and just for one.
Yeah, they're, they're not, they don't have a collective bargaining agreement, so there's
Right. So none of that other, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing other questions, will someone like to move this resolution? Councilwoman Seersey, do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostick, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Seersey?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
All right. Well, I think Mr. Wozniak and, um, Ms. Smith, thank you very much for your help, but I don't think you need to stick around for the tree, uh, removal.
Let me just let folks know that, that our, our Labor, uh, Council and, uh, Tracy Smith have worked so hard on working with the personnel matters, uh, during this time, and I really appreciate their help.
Thank you all very much. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract for tree removal. Uh, we discussed this last week. I don't believe there's been any changes.
That's right.
Would someone like to move the single reading ordinance?
Don't move.
Councilmember Smith, do I have a second? Councilmember Siemens, any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Member Kovar?
Aye.
He said yes. He's good.
I'm sorry. I'm very sorry.
Sorry.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Seersey?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is a resolution providing for appointments to the Tree Commission. As we discussed last week, um, there, right now are two people on our Tree Commission. We need at least three for it to operate. We had, um, a, a few people, um, who put in their application. Two were discussed last week as moving forward. I think it was, um, Two were discussed last week as moving forward. I think it was Bart Sheard in Ward Three and James Woodworth in Ward Two. What we said during our work session last week is that we were, people were going to go back and and consider whether or not they wanted one or both people appointed to the Tree Commission. Last week I advocated for both since we need a minimum of three people. And just in case, given COVID and other things, if we did have something that needed to go before the commission, we had four people and and not just the minimum of three. In addition, given the skills and also other things from the applicants, it seemed to fit with the work that we talked about doing on our committees. So any other, so whoever moves this, the names are not in the resolution yet. So when you move it, we need to move it with either both of those or one of those names, depending on what people want to do. If that's clear. Anyone? Have other thoughts?
I had a couple of questions. Could I ask a couple of questions? So how does this fit in with what we're trying to do in terms of promoting diversity on on the on the committees that would have one person of color added to the commission? Is that is that accurate?
Correct.
And then I had a separate question, and maybe this isn't the time to do it, but I just want to toss it out there. One of the things that I've heard when it comes to the quasi judicial bodies, and this is one of them, is that for people who are appealing or who are appearing before that, they're interested in knowing what the backgrounds is of the backgrounds are of the people who are on there. And we don't, this isn't.
Mr. Kovar, that it's already almost 10 o'clock. If this is a conversation we could have for another time and we.
I just.
Have somebody.
Say that's something.
Stormwater presentation for us this evening and outside visitor. So I would ask that we stick to the appointment process and discuss other things at later time. Thank you. Anyone else want to either advocate for or one or both of the applicants? Councilwoman Searsie, are you trying to talk?
Trying to talk and raise my hand and all of that, and it just went wrong. I do want to to advocate for the two because I think that not only do both of the candidates possess the the technical capability to to join the quasi judicial committee. One of the candidates is of color, and I also think that it is important for us to be able to have an established alternate in case for whatever reason we lose someone along the way. Keeping in mind that all of the appointments that we're making are only good until June 30 anyway, where we would need to revisit all of our committee membership. So I support having both.
Great. Would you like to actually make that motion?
Sure, I make a motion.
And Councilwoman Dibala seconds it. Any other questions or comments?
I would just say that I agree because, you know, if somebody's sick or can't come to a to a meeting, you know, it makes sense to have a backup. Thank you.
All right. Great. So the resolution for appointments has been moved to appoint. I'm going to get their names wrong. Mr. Bart Sheard from Ward Three and Mr. James Woodworth from Ward Two. Seeing no other comments or hands up at this time, will the clerk call the vote on the resolution to appoint to make appointments to the Tree Commission?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Searsie?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, now that ends our voting session. And I'll just say that ends the voting for this body, I think. This is, that was the very last vote that this city council will take, right? Yeah.
You might have some minutes to approve when in your very last item of our November.
So not as historic a moment as as maybe we will have. So next we have a work session. We know as we've been talking, there's been a great deal of discussion and concern about stormwater issues. We discussed this numerous times throughout the year as we were talking about our climate change resolution over the winter and early spring. We also have been discussing it when looking at the fee structure. There are a lot of things that come up, particularly with the storm that happened on September 10. And what we want to do was, you know, not start, but continue a conversation around stormwater issues. So I think I'll turn it over to the city manager to do a better kind of introduction to this workshop.
No, that was, that was great. So let's see, I think, Mr. Etheridge, you can turn your video on and be ready. We asked Mark Etheridge, who's the Montgomery County manager of water, of the Water Resources Section of the Department of Permitting Services here today. And I think the thing that we're trying to get a sense of is, you know, how, what are other jurisdictions facing? What are the similarities? Kind of how how the review process works for stormwater permits? And, you know, and then fun stuff like how does climate change impact us in that respect? There will be larger discussions with representatives from the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments about regional approaches to stormwater and flooding. But really happy to have Mark here with us today, tonight to talk a little bit about what, you know, what he's finding. I did send him a list of questions and things. And so, Mark, I'll turn it over to you. If you want me to ask the questions, I can do that, but you may just want to jump right in.
Sure. Thank you guys for asking me to to come into your meeting tonight. It's very exciting to do that. I think it's it's probably long overdue with this new technology we have that makes it so easy for us to get together. I hope that we'll be doing this more often. And on the tail of that, if you guys have any other questions after this meeting is over and you want to prevail, let me just just give me a call. I'm certainly available anytime. Love to talk about this stuff. I'll probably keep you here until 2:00 in the morning. There is a list of questions that I was given. I don't know. They're kind of broad ranging. I'm not sure what your actual focus wants to be this evening. But I can tell you a little bit to begin with. There were some questions about my staffing levels and things of that sort. I actually have six staff persons right now. I have eight positions. I have two unfilled positions, but I'm working with six, six staff. We, over the last fiscal year, approved almost 650 sediment control permits. Most of those include stormwater, of course. We do stormwater concept reviews and work with the planning board and a number, a number of things of that nature. I want to make sure, though, that I don't go on and on and get off topic. So I may prevail upon you, Suzanne, to to guide me into the direction or anybody else who has a question as to what exactly you would like me to address for you that would be the most helpful.
Sure. Well, I think that part of this is if you could describe outside of Tacoma Park, somebody needs to get a stormwater permit or whatever, what is the kind of, what are the standards that you use? What is your process of reviewing them?
Okay. Well, as you, we work under a delegation of authority from Maryland Department of the Environment, first of all. We also have a memorandum of understanding with the Soil Conservation District that allows us to do certain types of review on their behalf. So we, we, when we review construction plans and look at compliance for these sediment control and stormwater practices, we do the entire set of reviews altogether. One person reviews all the sediment control and stormwater management. There are peculiarities in our code beyond the 5,000 square feet, 100 cubic yards of earth movement requirements of the state. We have put in place several other elements for which sediment control is required. If there is no sediment control permit requirement, we do not address stormwater management. So we don't address stormwater management on its own. It has to have a sediment control permit requirement to begin with. Once we move into that as a requirement, then we look to see what are the peculiarities of that particular project that may require stormwater management. And basically, it's these days, it's anything that has a construction element along with it that requires a building permit and disturbs 5,000 square feet or more. We have some other things. If you're building a new house or a new commercial building, regardless of disturbed, disturbed area, sediment control and stormwater is required. If you are changing use from a single-family residential use to any other use, we require sediment control and stormwater management as well, because we found that in many cases, there's, there's outside work that just gets overlooked in the permitting process by the applicants, and we were catching up too often. So we wanted to get ahead of those kinds of things.
So one of the things that is a little bit strange is that Tacoma Park doesn't do the sediment control. We actually work with Mark's staff. So we do the stormwater side and and we cooperate with the county on the sediment control.
Yeah, it's very, very unusual. I I talked to Stu Comstock at one point years ago at the state, and he said he would never agree to that kind of a thing again.
But we we work really well together. We appreciate your staff. I know our Director of Public Works just thinks they're great. So I appreciate that. So how are your requirements tied to the kind of the regulatory rules from the state and the feds? What is it?
Well, we have to, under our delegation of authority, we have to meet certain minimum requirements for compliance that are set forth by MDE. We do not in DPS administer the NPDES program. The Department of Environmental Protection does that. They're the lead agency for that. They take advantage of some of the permitting that we offer in terms of getting their credits. But we also, we review plans for the Department of Environmental Protection when they're doing stream work or whatever they're doing. We review those plans and issue permits for those as well, but we don't get directly involved with NPDES compliance.
Okay, so when you get a, when you get one of these permit applications, how is it reviewed? And and do you just rely pretty much on what the the engineer that stamps the plans says about the way that it's done and the quantity that's addressed or any of that? How does that function?
Wouldn't that be nice if that worked that way? Wish it did. It's been suggested by many engineers, but no, we review the computations. We look at the math. We make sure that they're using the correct computational methods and things of that sort. One of the things that we require is in most cases, not for single-family teardowns, but in most other cases, they have to submit a stormwater management concept to us before we will accept their application for sediment control. And we look at sediment control and stormwater as one application. So if it's going to the planning board, certainly there are requirements for conceptual review before we can go to the planning board. If it's not going to planning board, let's say a a place of worship wants to increase their parking lot, they're going to submit a concept to us so we can make sure that they're on the right track and they're making the right assumptions and that we agree with the direction they're going before they get their development plans underway. Then those plans come in and we review those under with detailed review. And it's a long review. It results in some of the the complaints that we get. I don't know what you guys are looking for. I, it's very complicated. Why does it take so long to do the reviews? I only had a couple of comments. Why does it take you three weeks to get to it? We get a lot of those kind of legitimate questions.
So can a member of the public review the stormwater concept plans and the stormwater plans? How does the public interact with you and your office?
A couple of ways. When we do a stormwater concept, we have a requirement that the applicant send out notices to the downstream property owners, not so much to warn them that this development is coming forward and, you know, you know, light the torches, but to allow us to garner information from those people who have lived in that area for a long time with respect to local flooding problems, erosion problems, wet basement issues that we need to take into consideration when we do our review. Now, if someone calls me and says, hey, I want to see the plans on this concept, I am obligated to send them copies of those plans, and we do that very readily. Sometimes we get people that call every week and want to say anything new. Send me the new stuff. Again, with the technology we have today, it's very easy for us to do that, and we do do those kinds.
So are they, are they all electronic that you get?
We do all electronic review now. We do not allow any paper review whatsoever. Even with our floodplain studies and floodplain district permits and those other kind of sort of esoteric things, it's all electronic. The only thing that wouldn't be would be those rare occasions where we have what we call a forced harvest permit. That is, we work in coordination with the the Soil Conservation District, and they are not electronic yet, so we can't do everything electronic that way. But we try to push as much as we can. Everything that comes in now is electronic.
Okay. And do you ever have like a third party review of the plans?
We don't. We look.
Somebody doesn't trust your review. And how does that work?
Well, you know, I'd say we don't. There is one that's built into the system, and that is the notice of intent for projects that are disturbing an acre or more. There is a notice of intent. That allows the public to challenge our plan review to the state. We had one a few years ago, and when talking to the state, they weren't really sure how to proceed because they'd only had one before that was challenged. They go through and review that plan and make sure that we did the right thing. And if they find we didn't, then it goes through their process, starting from square one all over again. So in a way, there is a check there. We looked at doing contract reviews at one point. We discussed that and would actually put a contractor on on retainer and found that it wasn't very workable because especially today with ESD standards and the maximum extent practicable, which is very subjective. Consistency of review and consistency of approach is so important, and it's very difficult to do that on a contractual basis.
Okay. Um. Have, do you think that there's going to be through the sediment, your sediment control, stormwater review? Do you think there's going to be any changes in your requirements based on climate change?
You know, it's a good question, and I've discussed this with the state as well. The main thing we look at in terms of stormwater management compliance is the one-year statistical storm event. Under the current revised statistics, that really hasn't changed. The Atlas 14 data didn't have much of an effect on the one-year storm event. It actually lowered the 10 a little bit and it raised the 100. So we do have those 10 and 100-year elements that we look at occasionally. If we have, let's say, a school is being constructed in a residential neighborhood, and we suspect that the storm drain system wasn't sized to handle that, we have to have them do an analysis of the capacity of that storm drainage system. And they may have to do 10-year and 100-year control just to get that runoff safely into that system so we have good conveyance. We don't typically do 100-year or 10-year control. But in those cases, we would be using the new Atlas 14 data, and that would be slightly different. DEP's pond maintenance and modifications are now using the Atlas 14 data as well when they go in to modify or maintain a pond.
So what, what kind of conversations do you have with with developers that you're working with, the school or whatever, when you know, they even express maybe some concern about what might be required to respond to be resilient in the case of continued flooding? Do you have conversations like that, or do you just see what they provide you?
I rarely have people that are that forward-thinking on the developers and designer side. They want to do, and understandably, the the minimum standard and get out. There isn't a lot of that concern. I know that with our Department of Transportation and our storm drain infrastructure, there's a lot of concern about the aging infrastructure and the sizing of the infrastructure, and it's just a monstrous thing. Thank goodness, I don't have to deal with that very much. But no, we, I don't, I don't get that question very often from applicants.
Okay. Are your, are your standards the same as the state level kind of, or the standards, or are they more strict?
They're more stringent. Most, most jurisdictions are more stringent. You start with the minimum state requirements and you you tailor those to the local politics and the local geology and everything else. So one of the things that we did when the new standards came out after the 2007 Stormwater Act was we rejected the state's limit on the, their limited requirements for redevelopment projects. And instead, we instituted what we had always done is if it's redevelopment or new development, the the goal is the same. It's 100% stormwater management compliance through ESD practices. And then withstand with with structural practices, if you can't do that, we did not agree to a lesser standard for redevelopment. So we have that. And in fact, it's, it's, it's kind of shot us in the foot a few times because we wind up not being able to meet our stricter standards for some developments and have to issue stormwater waivers. And of course, then we get criticized for issuing waivers, even though we've provided. And of course, then we get criticized for issuing waivers, even though we've provided beyond the state minimum.
So you do have waivers. I don't think we do.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you know, the thing is, especially with, we have a lot of discussion about waivers from the county executive on down and I've met with them a couple of times and um, you have to understand, especially for single family teardowns, if we have a lot of record, a residential lot of record, a buildable lot. Let's say it was planted nineteen sixty-five when there was no stormwater. In some cases, because of the type of soils they have on those lots and other limitations, you couldn't tear down that house and build exactly the same house without a stormwater wa- waiver. Just can't decide to provide full stormwater. You have to have the infrastructure that supports that stormwater management. Sometimes it just isn't there.
Okay. Um, so what, I, how does your office work with W S S C?
We don't. We, we don't really coordinate too much with W S S C. We have in this new age of E S D standards moved into the public right of way with some of our treatment practices more. And we've rubbed up against some of their standards and we've had to coordinate things like how uh, waterhouse connections are going to cross a bio swell, things to that's technical stuff. Other than that, we, we don't have a lot of typical interaction with W S S C.
Okay. And um, let's see. You, I guess, one question that I know our public works director asked is, is um, what would ever happen about, since we have the stormwater authority and you have the sediment control permits? Uh, would you ever want to give the sediment control to us or us give the stormwater to you? Kind of what would the process be of that and what pros and cons of that might be?
I can't speak on behalf of the executive branch, but I can give you some opinions. I think us giving sediment control to you would be a no brainer. It's not gonna, not gonna hurt us at all. We don't have to staff up. We don't have to accept an inventory of stormwater practices. Going the other direction would be, I think, a lot of discussion with the Department of Environmental Protection. They would be taking on your inventory of stormwater practices to bring it into their inventory for inspection and maintenance. There's a lot of costs involved. There's a lot of differences probably in design standards that have gone on throughout the years. And I don't know what, what status uh, you guys have of your inventory, what to, you know, at all anyway. So there would be some, some larger discussions going that direction, but you guys taking up sediment control, I think would, in my opinion, would not, not cause much of a ripple at all for us.
Yeah, I mean, it would mean a staff person for us, but there's uh, but you know, that would be one of the things that um, you know, we certainly have talked about over the, over the years so that it makes it a little bit easier as we work with somebody trying to build their house or, or do what, what's needed.
Yeah, there's another municipality I spoke with uh, several times over the, over the last few years who doesn't have any review authority right now. And was thinking they would like to get into the stormwater business. Um, that's what spurred my discussion with the state and the state said, you know, it's not likely we're ever going to give one or the other to someone to do. If we're starting with a new uh, delegation of authority, it's going to be a package of sediment and stormwater. And so they're wrestling with that too. They, they, they wanted to get involved with the stormwater, but they didn't necessarily want to gear up for the uh, the sediment control, every day construction sort of uh, work that that would entail.
Okay. And just um, thinking back, I guess it was what, three or four weeks ago when the, when the big storm came through? Well, I just wondered, what was your, what was, what did you hear from people about?
Catastrophe. I mean, it was a huge event. It was over five inches in an hour at many places. That statistic, that could be a thousand year storm event. Nothing is, is, is uh, designed to handle that. We are still, we talk about it every day. I talked about it today with the manager of our inspection staff. Uh, we're still reeling from that because people look at that as an example of, of how the system has failed. And uh, it really isn't the case. Uh, if we're having those kinds of floods in the statistical one year storm event, you, we have an issue there certainly. Maybe the five or the two, but you know, when those types of events happen, it's catastrophic. And it may, you know, bring some problems to the fore. Uh, but uh, it's just, that's just beyond coping.
And a, a final question, how do you uh, respond to property owners that have kind of a dispute between the two of them dealing with stormwater and?
If we have an open permit, then we, we try to get in there and offer advice. We don't have a lot of uh, enforcement authority to deal with those sort of what we call nuisance drainage issues, the lot to lot drainage issues that really come down to property damage and those kinds of things that really courts have to adjudicate those kinds of property claims. We, if we see a plan come through and we can tell that it might be a problem, we bring that to the engineers' attention. One thing that we're implementing as of November first is that all the engineers are going to have to place on their plan as a drainage statement to say that they are aware of their requirements under state code for producing a quality product and analyzing the downstream impact. And that to the best of their knowledge and belief, they have done that and they do not believe that they are going to cause adverse impact to adjacent properties.
And that's part of, that's part of their ethics as it is, as a professional.
It is, but I have been surprised over the years, the number of engineers who did not have a clue. Even land uh, attorneys that I've spoken with, no clue that there was any responsibility on the part of the designer with respect to the effects of lot to lot runoff in state code.
I, I saw the, I saw that uh, language you sent to me and I thought it looked really neat. So we were, we're looking at it in our, in our offices. Well, I, I asked the questions that I had, but I, I know, I'm sure our council members have plenty they want to talk to you about. But I at least wanted to get through my list because uh, we were trying to make sure we covered some of the major areas that we've heard about.
And I'm always available. If you guys have any more questions, see if you get the same answer twice. That's always a good test.
Well, we do that a lot, so um, I think Councilwoman DiBala has some question.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. I'll try to keep, keep it under, keep it under, under three or four hours here.
All the way, I don't care.
I can get your phone over and we can talk about stormware tomorrow in detail, but um, so, so you're talking primarily about development and redevelopment and not about the cur- the current, the current drainage on existing properties between neighbors and
Correct.
The things that are facing us in the city. You're doing this one part. So on this one part, um, couple of questions. Uh, tell me again about the difference between development and redevelopment in terms of the rules. Because I had heard that they were different and I thought I heard you say now that they're not. Um, and say a little bit more about exactly how the county and the city coordinate as we go through a project. So let's just make up a project. Let's just say there's a couple of houses going in um, in a lot in Tacoma Park and that kicks us over five thousand feet disturbed. And then let's say it's got a slope and there's going to be an erosion plan. And you know, now we're talking about where the houses go and where the stormwater goes and what it looks like. And so how does, how does that work? And how does that work if it's redevelopment, if it's just changing a building, but not actually expanding the footprint?
Okay.
And then second question is about, is about the change in climate. So let's go with this piece first. Thank you.
Redevelopment has a specific definition under state code and county code and that is it has to be existing land use of, let's see if I can get this right, commercial, industrial, institutional or multifamily. And the existing imperviousness on the property has to be at least forty percent to be considered redevelopment by their standards. So if we talk about tearing down houses on residential lots and building new houses, strangely enough, that's not redevelopment. That's considered new development. Technically under the, under the code. The only difference in Montgomery County between redevelopment and new development is that the, the state requires that if it's new greenfield development, you have to have at least the equivalent of an inch P E storage through E S D practices in order to go forward. That does not exist for redevelopment, so.
I think you have to explain, I think you have to explain.
It's a minimum standard you have to meet through E S D certain practices if it's green, greenfield development. That, that minimum standard doesn't exist. Now, in, in state code, state model ordinance, when they came out with this new law, they said if it's a redevelopment project, we will, we have a lesser standard that you have to meet. You don't have to meet the full treatment requirement for redevelopment. Because it is redevelopment, it's economically good, I guess. In some cases, there's sometimes limitations on existing storm drain. There's old, old fill soils and, and you know, there are reasons why redevelopment is more difficult than greenfield development. So they said, we'll give you a lesser standard. And Montgomery County said, no, no thanks. We'll keep the same standard with that one little hiccup being if it's greenfield, you have one element you have to meet. Uh, but we push for full, full E S D uh, control for everything.
Let, let me just interrupt for a moment. We actually do have a lower standard for the redevelopment, but we don't ever give waivers. So that's, that's how our approach has changed. It's different from the counties.
Okay, yeah, that's interesting. Um, the second part was how we coordinate with you guys. Obviously, the applicant has to submit their sediment control plan to us. And we will review that sediment control plan for sediment control only. We don't get into requiring stormwater concepts or coordinating the vagaries of the stormwater approach. We, we just do those, those designs for sediment control only. Sign those plans and then we will issue our sediment control permit and leave all the rest to you guys for stormwater.
So if someone is filing a county stormwater plan, it's who's signing off on it? Both? The city and the county?
We both have a sign off. We do the sediment control sign off. We do it for sediment control only. Just the silt fence and this construction entrance and all those kinds of things. And then the design for stormwater management and the implementation of that stormwater management is done by you guys.
Okay.
It gets a little complicated sometimes. Not too bad.
Okay. And then um, the, the other thing I wanted to explore, well, you talked a bit about the um, incorporating or not, a changing, did on a changing climate. Changing rainfall into this whole system. So we get a lot of people saying, how come you don't control for the storm that happened in the summer?
Yeah.
And you, you've explained generally, but can you get a little more specific? So I thought I heard you say that the county standard is at a, it's, it's all based on this atlas, this statewide atlas that i- if I got this right, uh, revision number fourteen or version number fourteen, which is relatively current or not? And is there another one in, in, being developed?
Yeah, so um, there's a difference between stormwater treatment and flood control. Uh, it is um, sort of taken all as one by most people that stormwater management is to control flooding. That is not our primary purpose. Our primary purpose under state law is to make sure that we remove pollutants from the developed runoff and that we reduce downstream erosion in the stream system. That's the, the ultimate goal. We have to be cognizant of larger flows, especially in the old days where we had the larger ponds. Those have a lot of safety uh, design built into them. They were based on certain statistical storm sizes. And when your hundred year storm event suddenly goes up, now uh, the state of Maryland and the local jurisdictions who have ponds have concerns about the efficacy of those existing embankments and the stability of those, those embankments. Uh, the lower storm events, you know, we used to control for the two year storm. Uh, M D E changed the law in two thousand and seven, said uh, or the state did, said uh, we're going to do the one year storm event. That's ninety-nine percent of the storm events uh, that occur. So we're going to try to treat those, remove pollutants from those and uh, reduce stream erosion by trying to infiltrate some of that part of the storm event. But it's not flood control. It's not meant to be flood control. The only time we do larger flood type controls is we know we have a specific conveyance issue in the public system so that we don't want to flood an intersection and cause a traffic accident and those kinds of things.
So, so what I hear you saying is that the county and this, and all of this is ultimately the state law is, is not about volume so much as it is about pollutants and erosion.
It's not about volume as much anymore. You're correct. We used to actually do a volume control and a quality control back in the old days. But now, the very first drop of water that touches the ground counts as our quantity control as well. We're trying to reduce that runoff from the site so that it acts like it's an undeveloped site hydrologically in the one year storm event. That's for environmental health.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And, and at some point, do, do share your contact info.
Okay.
Councilman Kostic.
Thank you very much. Um, and I have a, a number of questions. Um, I, I may not get to all of them. Um, but I, it's ten thirty at night and this is very technical, so I apologize if I'm not getting something in advance. Um, so just to make sure I'm kind of following up on that conversation about the volume versus the flooding versus the treatment. What are the protections that are built in place to make sure that new projects as well as existing infrastructure are not causing flooding? Or we're providing those protections for people so we're not encouraging flooding or we're addressing flooding that is already happening?
We have to be cognizant of the effects of the development on adjacent properties, certainly. But to enforce something on those, we have to have a system to objectively measure what's allowable and not allowable. And we have to have the enforcement capability through code to enforce those allowances. So let's just say, we don't have that right now. Let's just say that we had uh, an allowance that said, hey developer, you can't increase runoff more than ten percent on the adjacent property. Unless they, they said, okay, that's fine. They increased it by nine percent and it still causes their basement to flood. Engineer says, we've done everything we were supposed to do by code. You can't code all this stuff away. So what has to happen under state code, uh, state common law, riparian code? Uh, the designer who is putting, is increasing or changing the direction or amount of flow from one lot to the other is required to analyze that downstream effect to make sure doesn't appear that it's going to cause damage to adjacent properties if damage does occur. Or if there are claims of damages. Sometimes we've had instances where people say, hey, you, my basement is now all, all musty. I never did that before. Those claims have to be investigated and adjudicated and they have to, and done so in some um, objective format. We, as environmental control uh, professionals, we just don't have the format to do that. So we don't look specifically at that. If we see something that looks like it's going to be a problem and we've done this in many cases, we tell the engineer that, you know, you need to really take a close look at this and I want to, I want you to answer me in writing as to why you think this is okay. But ultimately, if they say it's okay, we, we pretty much have to buy it.
So um, with regard to the analysis of the downstream impacts, is that, that is something that, that is happening right now and that's happening through a separate process or, or that's something that needs to happen?
State law.
That's happening through the state.
State law governs lot to lot runoff in terms of its effect on property values and damage. Uh, there are a lot of old subdivisions uh, in the county where the backyards were all designed as a big swale to carry the flows. And as long as they go safely through those, those swales, people might not like the extra water, but it goes there and that's safe conveyance and that's what it does. When it turns out that maybe somebody filled in part of the swale back in nineteen eighty-two and it doesn't flow so well anymore and it redirects to someone else's lot, who's to say who's responsible for that? Because it's not necessarily the guy building the new house. It may be the guy from nineteen eighty-two, but that's not something you can enforce against anymore. So they get very complicated. So we have to look at each, each uh, case very, very specifically. But we also have to keep in mind our, our goal and that is environmental protection is what we're doing. Doesn't mean we don't care about the rest of the things, but we are here to make sure environmental standards are met. And in fact, in the state's model ordinance and as reflected in our ordinance, there is verbiage to say our reviews are for environmental compliance only and we are not attempting to take away the responsibility for a good product from those professionals who are designing those products under state code. I don't know if you guys have seen it, but we have a document out that kind of goes into that a little bit now.
Thank you. That's, that's really helpful to understand. And is it, am I understanding correctly that the stormwater, like the drain system itself is managed by D E P in the county, not by you?
Stormwater does a lot of things. It's, it's a very vague term. So storm drainage in the public right of way is handled by the Department of Transportation. They handle that to make sure that that water is safely They handle that to make sure that that water is safely removed from the road surface. And safely conveyed through their pipe system or swales or whatever they've got. To convey that away from the area so that it doesn't cause a nuisance to the public or a danger to the public. That's the storm drain system. Uh, D E P will go in and look at our stormwater management treatment practices for the life of those practices. And expect them to make sure they're being maintained properly and they're still functioning properly as they were designed. And they can require people to do maintenance and then those kinds of things if it's necessary.
Thank you. And um, in the future, Susie, I would love to get some more information sort of about how our structures work and how we can think about. The flooding, because I think we care about the, the treatment very much, but we also kind of have this, this missing part that people are really focused on. And I know it's something that, that Daryl's aware of and, and thinks about, but I'd really like to, to drill into that more. Because I know it's something residents are really worried about.
Very thorny, it's very complicated. We've had discussions with the Department of Transportation, D E P, housing, the executive staff. Everybody in a room trying to figure out the best way for the county to holistically address these types of lot to lot issues. Uh, it is overlooked oftentimes because it, that it's in the state law, because it's hard to find it cogently in the state law. It is there, but it's really a property protection issue in state law.
Yeah, I think it's a, a really important discussion. Um, we have a certain advantage in Tacoma Park that so much of. The oversight of these systems is all under our own public works. So we, they do the transportation, they, you know, the road drains as well as a lot of work. Um, you know, on, on different properties. So there's a little, there's. We're not divided up by agency in the same way, which is useful. Um, but it's, it's still really difficult when we get on private property.
Yeah, we don't even have any private storm drain requirements in Montgomery County. You can size your private storm drain to whatever standard you would like to size it for, because it's going to affect only you by definition if it's private. If it were to fail. So we don't even have any design standard for public, for private storm drain.
Um, just a couple of more questions, kind of a, a few other issues. Was I understanding correctly from what you said that the county doesn't have a different standard for redevelopment and development? Projects, but the city does, whereas the county gives waivers and the city does not, or did I not hear that properly?
Yeah, the county does offer stormwater management waivers when they are absolutely necessary.
Okay, but your, your, your standards for redevelopment and development are, are the same?
Yes, uh, other than that one element, if it's a greenfield development and you can't provide at least a minimum amount of, of, of defined. Treatment per E S D practices, then we will tell you, we'll tell Park and Planning, we won't support the subdivision or we won't support the development. Uh, it happened a lot, but it does happen occasionally.
Probably a stupid question, but what is a greenfield?
Greenfield is a, you're building something where there was nothing before.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I figured out.
It's new development as opposed to redevelopment. So we recently had an episode where we had a, a Montgomery County Public School. That didn't actually meet the definition of redevelopment, because rather than forty percent impervious, they had thirty nine point eight. Percent impervious. So technically, they had to meet that, that, that minimum treatment standard for new development to be able to rebuild the school.
Okay. Um, and just then I wanted to ask a couple of questions sort of with regard to, um, I think. You mentioned the sediment control and, and I know the, the place where that has kind of come up. Um, recently has been in discussion with residents with regard to a development project at Tacoma Junction. And I know there are um, some, some residents nearby who experienced issues with sediment. When there was construction done on the fire station there. So I'm just curious sort of what the sediment control process is when there's a development, a redevelopment in this case. Um, and um, and what protections there are and what recourse people have in terms of um, addressing issues.
Yeah, when there's a, a project that comes in, we have to review that project for the design of the sediment control that they're proposing. And we make sure that that sediment control is designed to comply with sediment control treatment standards. Because sediment is a pollutant and we want to keep that out of the stream. We all want to keep it on people, off people's properties as well. So we make sure that per design, it meets the requirements. Then we get to implementation. So we have a pre-construction meeting in the field before they start doing anything. They mark out the limit of disturbance. The inspectors walk that limit. Say, yeah, this looks like the plan. You're good to go. Put your sediment controls in. Sediment controls are put in by the contractor. And then throughout the life of that project, our inspectors have to visit the site to make sure that the sediment control practices are being maintained. That they were installed correctly. Someone hasn't just taken them out. Probably have with a lot of that is staffing, you know, we can't be there every day. And uh, so we have instances where we get a complaint about, hey, I, I, I got sediment running into my property and we go out to, to check it. And the inspector hasn't been there for a week and in that interim, they've knocked over the silt fence or something and it's not functional. So it's always a continuous catch up thing. Or we'll get a, a, you know, super, super storm and everybody complains. Because the sediment controls aren't designed to handle hundred year storm events. We are trying to reduce the amount of impact on adjacent properties, not completely remove it. There's no way to completely remove it. Uh, construction project is a construction project and we just try to make it as, as um, as, as limiting as possible on, on, on. The amount of damage that it can cause to the environments, certainly, and to the adjacent properties as well. But it's, it's a continual effort with our inspection staff. I'm on the phone with them constantly all the time. I've got a field meeting tomorrow. On a project uh that someone's complaining about, you know, there's orange water coming down through the backyard now. And you know, that might not be a violation, because it might not be actual sediment. It might just be discolored water with clay in it. Uh, which washes through the system, but we have to go take a look, because more often than not, the contractor hasn't done something properly. Or skipped a step or didn't have the plans or, you know, all kinds of things can happen.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, just wanted to note two, two other things just for the future, not, not for right now. Um, but I, I noticed that you had mentioned um, that notices are sent to the downstream properties. Uh, when there's a development project planned, just interested for the future, Susie, and what we do with regard to that when, um, when there's a project planned. And um, also the notice of intent um, for projects that are disturbing more than an acre, I thought was, was an interesting. Thing to maybe delve into more for us here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Effrigi. I appreciate all the information. Just a couple of things I wanted to ask you. One, you mentioned you don't have a lot of interaction with or, or the necessity to coordinate very often with. Um, W S S C. One of the things that happened in the big storm in September in portions of um Tacoma Park anyway. There are a number of these older drains that I think wouldn't be allowed now, but at the time they were put in decades ago, they were. Connected, areaway drains connected directly to the sewage.
Ah, yeah, okay.
And so when heavy rain like this happens, depending on what the condition is and the equipment that they have in those homes. Then sewage can start either coming into the house or, or flowing outside. And since you mentioned that your purpose in, not your purpose, but the purpose in controlling stormwater is really environmental and not wanting. Bad things to enter into like Sligo Creek or whatever. Is there a role for your office when this type of merging that shouldn't happen? Does happen, because I think some of that and bad stuff ends up getting into the nearby streams.
Yeah, that's, that's less a uh result of surface runoff than it is infiltration of groundwater. Into the sanitary sewer pipes itself during large storm events. And you see the sanitary sewers, they run by gravity. In most cases, they run down along the stream systems. Uh, here in Myersville, where I live, we have a, a lot of in, it, it, what we call I N I. We have water coming into our pipes when we have big storm events. Some of it is from illegal connections from downspouts to the sanitary sewer. But it really isn't a surface runoff issue. It's more a groundwater issue. And it's more a, a product of the um, size and the condition of, of W S S C's pipes. Uh, some places have combined storm and sanitary systems by design. There, I think there's some sections of D C that have that still. In that case, stormwater management does become important, because it catches that surface runoff and holds it. While the rest of the water is going through the pipes, so it doesn't overwhelm the system. We don't have that, that system in Montgomery County. It's a completely separate system. Although water can get into the W S S C lines at a large storm event. And it can overwhelm the capacity of that line and cause backups.
So in that case, though, whose responsibility is it to uh, try to get that fixed? Is it W S S C? Is it the individual homeowners? Is it the community where they exist? Wha- wha- how, how would you see that?
That'd be a question for W S S C specifically. Uh, there could be a lot of instances. It could be an illegal connection that caused the problem. Um, it could be uh, an ailing infrastructure that has uh, be, that's allowing a lot of I N I. It could be a broken pipe. That's allowing water to come in and overwhelming the system so that it backs up.
Asking your office, you're saying, isn't?
My office doesn't get involved in that. No, we don't get involved in those kind of things.
One other unrelated question. So a lot of people here in Tacoma Park say they like the idea of the rain garden program that. The county has and we don't have something similar here. Um, i- it seems to me when we heard about this from uh, another county person, maybe a year or, or two ago. They indicated that the program existed. It was very effective, but there's a limited number of. Or a cap on the amount per year or a limited number of gardens that they could fund. Hey, could you just describe how that works?
I can tell you a little about it, because it's not my department that handles those kinds of things. We deal with construction projects. The Department of Environmental Protection uh, has the, the rain garden programs and Ann English over there is in charge. And they have funding to help people install these. They, I think they have targeted certain geographic areas where they really try to push, where they need additional treatment. Um, some of the uh implementations are limited by soil type and other things that are on the lots. But Ann English at Department of Environmental Protection is very good to work with and she's in charge of that program, can give you all the information you would need.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Great. Um, I'm not seeing any other hands. This was really helpful. Um, and um, I took a couple of notes, but it was like one of those things like go back and listen again.
We could talk all night long about this, but we'd never get through it all. Yeah.
One of the questions, Mark, I have for you is um, on the uh, the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. Um, has been talking about doing more regionally on stormwater. Um, have you been part of those conversations at all yet or?
Um, no.
I think they're just starting. I was just curious.
I'm not sure what their goal would be. We, you know, we had a regional stormwater program years and years ago. And back in the seventies and eighties and found that it, it failed miserably, because conveyance to the regional treatment places, which usually through open stream channels. And development that was draining into the open stream channels increased flow into those stream channels and eroded them. And went to a pond and filled the pond up with dirt. So uh, we had some, some big issues with that. The, the, the tendency over the years has been to move away from regional and move more and more up closer to the actual development. The closer you can get to the point of pollutant production, to put your treatment practice, the more efficiency you have. Of, of pollutant removal and effectiveness. That's why we're doing the E S D now. We're right up in the development, working with the developers. As opposed to down at the bottom of the hill, let them do their deal and just send all the water down here and we'll treat it. That's less effective and less efficient than getting up there, working with the development.
Great. That was super helpful. Um, well, thank you very much. I think we're gonna move on to elections now.
And, and thanks, Mark, and we will be following up with some more.
Okay.
Uh, discussions with you and appreciate your time. I'll send out to council your contact information.
Yeah, I was just fixing to say that. Go right ahead and send that all out there.
Great, thanks.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. All right, Brian, and you're with us and our city clerk, Jesse Carpenter. Um, so what you got for us?
So being here. Yeah, if I may say, just to start off, I'm, I'm glad that uh, some members of the Board of Elections are able to be here tonight. And uh, they, that, there is a written uh, update posted. And I just want to say, uh, the city manager uh, commented about my efforts. But I have to tell you, the Board of Elections has really stepped up and is doing a tremendous job right now. So uh, so I really uh, want to thank them for that. But uh, Brian Ernst uh, provide his report, his update.
Sure. Thank you, Jesse. Um, I can talk through what's listed in the written update. And then we can have some questions after that. Um. So I would, I should say, I mean, all of the work that's being done is definitely joint with the board. But also, um, I mean, city staff are doing a lot, um, both between the Communications Department and then City Clerk. And her office is also contributing, I mean, a lot of different um, things to the preparations. So the, this written update is really, is a combination of all of that work that's being done. So I'll start on the communication side. We have been, from the beginning, trying to communicate the early email in. Voting decision and how to mail in your ballots through all sources that we can. Um, the Communications Director, Donna Wright, has been working with the board at all of our meetings, which has been very helpful. To put together different materials that we can share with residents. So that's been the October City Newsletter. There was a postcard that went out to all residents. Um, and then a one page information sheet that also went out to all residents. Um, in the weeks and months before Election Day. Uh, the, there's also the email address that I heard referenced earlier, elections@tocomaparkmd.gov, where people can send questions. Uh, we received a lot of questions already, uh, both to the email address and also over the phone and are responding as quickly as possible. Um, I would say most of those questions are related to people who have not received their ballot and they're just asking if it's on the way. And so generally, I would say vast majority is just to respond and say, yes, we, you should just keep checking your mail. It should be arriving soon. Um, on the ballots themselves, so the city's vendor, Fort Orange Press, delivered ballots to. A mail facility in Gaithersburg, October fourteenth, and then those were subsequently mailed out. I think many people have received their ballots and then people are already returning them. You can return, of course, via mail or via the two drop boxes that are at the community center or at the recreation center. You can, I think, if you have any issues or you need to register, also starting. Uh, tomorrow voter assistance is available at the community center with the city clerk and her staff. That will be from nine AM to five PM. So people can register if they are not registered. They can um, use the ballot marking device if they need that assistance. They have questions. They're also available. Um, so that's starting tomorrow. Um, once ballots start arriving, so any day now, we. We will begin regularly processing those that are received and subsequently. Um, do, beginning the, the check against the voter register, looking for signatures. This is also a chance for us to correct any errors that were done. So for example, if somebody forgot to sign their envelope, we can reach out and contact them and get them to sign it. Or somehow fix the, the problem that they had on, on the envelope that they sent back in. So that will, that will be ongoing, starting um, this, essentially this weekend and into next week up until and after Election Day. On Election Day itself, so while we are mailing every registered voter in the city and ballot. We still must have some sort of voting on Election Day. Um, that's for anybody who wants to register on the same day. That's for anybody who was um. For some reason or another did not get their ballot, still feels like they need assistance. Um, and they can come in or they, if they lost their ballot, they can come on Election Day and still vote in person. The board has decided to use the parking lot behind a community center for Election Day voting. So it can be outdoors rather than having people come into a enclosed space for extended periods with election workers. Um, so we have met twice now to review the layout for the parking lot. With um, cars entering from Philadelphia and then exiting out onto Maple. Uh, pedestrians can also walk, walk up and vote in person on Election Day. Uh, pedestrians can also walk, walk up and vote in person on election day as well. On election equipment. So the city has a couple different vendors for election equipment. So we have the electronic poll book. That is the device that has the voter register, which we use to check voters against once they mail their ballot in or they arrive to vote in person. So then electronic poll book is from um No Ink. They're essentially their iPads that are loaded with the register. And then we can go through and um, go through some easy steps to find the voter and then make sure that they are checked off as having um submitted their ballots. So they cannot, of course, vote again. Uh, we also have a separate vendor that's doing the counting and the ballot marking device. So ballot marking device is um, for anyone who feels uncomfortable voting on paper, essentially, or is unable to vote on paper. So if you need assistance with audio voting or if you um have trouble filling out the little tiny bubbles, you can use a computer or a, a it's kind of like a phone system to listen to the ballot and be able to mark it that way. So that is, that will be available along um at the voter assistance days and then also on election day. And then that same vendor is the, is providing the scanning equipments that will be used to uh, scan all the ballots we receive and, and um, record the, the results. So record the votes that each, each ballot has on it. Um, we received those scanners, uh, let me say, two weeks ago and have done subsequent testing on those, both with the, with the vendor um onsite. And so I have to say, many, many thanks to Arthur David Olson on the board who um, put together eight hundred and thirty-two ballots that included every possible combination of how you could mark the ballots. Um, and sent them through the scanners to ensure that no matter what you do, it will count correctly. Thankfully, we can say that they, they uh did record all those, all those vote patterns correctly. And so we feel confident that they, that the scanners are capturing everything that's sent through. Of course, not everybody marks their ballots correctly. Um, and so we do have our guide on what to do in that, in that case, but also um, the scanners do have some pre-written rules in order to um, capture whether somebody has skipped, skipped a bubble and moved to the next one accidentally and um able to process or flag it for the board to review later if needed. Once we get to election day and starting on election day and thereafter, as you know, it will take several days to count all the ballots as they come in because we have mail ballots that will be arriving after election day. Um, the board plans to release daily updates on the on the results and the counts from our tabulation is will be ongoing every day from election day forward. And those will be posted, I believe, on the city website, but I think we're still talking about that, but I think most likely on the elections page on the city website. Um, and we'll also post other information like turnout numbers and things like that. For staffing, we do have both the board and city staff that will be helping us to work for the different elections. And we have two main areas where we need staff. One is for intake and processing of all of the mail in ballots that we've received. That is very labor intensive. And so you need people to open the envelopes, check them, scan them against the register, make sure that everything looks like it uh is correct. And then we can move forward with those mail in ballots. And then, of course, we need people on election day itself. Um, at the moment, I believe we have recruited um, a small number of volunteers, but I think hopefully sufficient number to assist with all of those efforts as well. And then finally, we, I think, as has been clear throughout the process, are doing our doing all we can in the planning to make sure that we are considering health and safety precautions throughout this. So um, unfortunately, counting and working with mail in ballots does require people to be in person for an extended period inside. And so we're thinking about how to make that as safe as possible for the workers that have to do that. That is all of our updates and we, I am happy to take questions.
Great. Thank you. Thanks so much, Brian, for that update. If we have any questions, Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you so much and thank you for all your work on this. Um, I'm, I'm just kidding, but I am actually truly curious um how there were eight hundred and thirty-two different ballot iterations. That's amazing. And thank you. Thank you, Arthur David, for your work on this. Um. I'm just curious in terms of the results you mentioned and, and reporting back um on the results each day. And then I just wanted to check on the timeline in terms of understanding when those results are final. So the, the, am I correct that the tenth, the Tuesday after is the last day? Um, for people, for the city to receive ballots that people have mailed?
Yeah, I think, in fact, the tenth is a holiday, right? And so Wednesday is the certification of results.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So um, so Wednesday is the, the final results and you'll be providing updates each day throughout that, that period.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Are, are those dates correct?
I think no. Jesse, we can't hear you if you're talking, you're talking.
Sorry about that. Sorry. So you're right. So Veterans Day is the eleventh, so which is Wednesday. So uh, it's the twelfth that the council will meet to hear the certification of results, the final results on Thursday.
Okay, the twelfth.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I've, I've been hearing from people um that, that they've been receiving ballots and a few people have had questions. I appreciate um, the help that they, you've been able to give to people and um it, it's been pretty seamless in terms of connecting people and getting, getting the information. I see Councilmember Siemens has his vote. Flyer up there. Anyway, thank you very much.
Great. Uh, Councilwoman Searcy.
Great. Um, thank you so much, Brian and, and, and author and those that have been working um the Board of Elections and definitely our, our clerk. I don't know how you do it. So thank you so much for responding to all of the, the emails that you've received about ballots and letters and things. Um, a couple of quick questions. One, I know that in Ward Six, we've had some mail delivery issues. Um, have, have you all received any um additional feedback from residents? Um, stating that they, they haven't received their, their ballots or things were misdelivered. I know I've heard about quite a bit of it. We have sent a note um to um Raxton's office to follow up with, with the mail um postmaster, but I was just wondering if you've heard after some of the initial feedback that we received, have you heard of any other chronic issues in terms of mail ballot delivery or misdelivery?
I want to ask, the city clerk has been updating her since I know the phones are going to her for these types of questions.
And actually, I'm happy to say they are now forwarded to someone else, but but um, I, I, I think there's not, there aren't other chronic issues. I know in certain neighborhoods, there have been problems and, and they're they're scattered issues, but um uh, for instance, in Ward Six, we had the issue where um one person received a number of letters addressed to people all over the city and they all came to the one address. And it turns out that they weren't ballots, they were letters and but still that was a serious misdelivery issue. A lot of the other delivery problems relate to um uh, are, are not really chronic postal service problems. It is curious, the, the um how long it's taken some ballots to arrive, even whereas we're virtually some people receive their ballots uh Friday and people are still receiving from that same group, still receiving ballots, but uh, so I can't explain the difference, really. But uh, uh, but I, I can't identify any of the chronic problems that are going on. I, I know some residents are concerned and, and have their own concerns about mail, but we, we'll look at it all when we're finished and I think we'll have a, a picture of problems that came up.
Okay. Thank you so much. And again, thank you all so much for all of your hard work.
Great. Um. Councilwoman Devalla.
Yes, thank you. So echoing the thanks for the many hours that the Board of Elections has been putting into this, not to mention the clerk. Um, it's awesome. And it's uh, at least in Ward Two, well, I think citywide, it's very appreciated. Um, the importance of a city election cannot be understated. So a couple of specific questions. So I've um people are, are contacting you if they have an issue. That's great. If someone say, for example, if they're um deaf and they want to vote by person and not by paper, they don't have to wait till election day, correct? That's what the days, the, from tomorrow on are, are set up for, for people to come and, and vote early in person, if in person is what they need to do. Is that correct? Uh, nobody seems to be talking.
I think that, um, I think it's fair to say, yes, we, we didn't really want to advertise it as early voting. So we're
Okay, so it's not early voting.
But if somebody shows up and they need to vote, they will vote. They need, they, they know it's going to take them a long time and they don't want to clog up the line on
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. All right. Um. And for people who are used to the old system where uh, on election night, you've got the stack of ballots and you're reading them out one by one and it's all filmed and you can be in the room. So, so there's a few extra steps here. You have to open up the ballot. You have to scan it. You have to check the voter rolls. Those are all the kinds of things that happen when someone actually votes, right? But now you have to do all of that after you get the ballot. So there's more work involved. Um, and, and tell me again, because I think I missed it about, are you going to be doing this on camera? Or not? And, and are you, when does that all start and, and and how, and, and how soon do you think you'll be starting with the daily posts? Will you have a post the night of election day of the total? So at that point, just go through that one more time because I think I didn't quite catch it.
Sure. Yeah, I think that's a good question. I mean, we've definitely been talking to City TV about how we can have live coverage of aspects of the process. I think um, certainly the scanning of ballots as they're being tabulated will be covered so people can see how that is being done. The, for when we receive the mail in ballots, um, we won't have live coverage of just when they're getting checked in on the, the voter register against um, whether they're a registered voter or not.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We would like to have live coverage of just the um our video feed of when people are opening the envelopes and checking them so that people can see what that is, what people are the staff are doing with envelopes and ballots once they're actually being opened and, and handled.
Okay. And so you don't have a schedule or any of that for, for that yet? And that's fine.
Yeah, I don't, not specific hours yet. I think we'll be able to communicate that, that soon.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then um I think I might've just lost it. There was the last question along those lines. Um. Posting.
You, you were asking about when, how will the note, how will the totals be shown or that kind of thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think, I mean, we'll have an update on election day with the initial what um, batch of counts that we'll have done. Um, so we're not, because we are not counting any ballots until polls close on election day. So not until eight PM would be, be able to start actually. Um, not would we be able to do any of the results tabulation at that point. Um. So after eight PM on election day, we can start releasing results with the, the tabulation. Um, before that, I think um, if possible, we could be releasing turnout information about how many ballots received, but I'm not sure. I don't think we even discussed that in detail at how how that would be done on frequency and may or be posted.
Okay. And, and so all of this relies on, this is my last question. All of this relies on volunteers that, to work election day in particular. So are you still taking volunteers? What kinds of people are you looking for? How, who do they talk to? Tell us something about that.
Sure. I mean, we're definitely looking for more volunteers if people are interested. Um, we have started doing our training for election workers, but um, those can be done again, especially for the the review of the ballots that are received via mail or the Dropbox. That, that's a very quick training that can be done. And so I think the more people makes, will make it go faster. What we're limited by is incapacity is that we don't have enough space to have appropriate distance for people um, inside to be simultaneously doing a lot at once. But I think we would benefit from having some more volunteers, certainly if, if there's people that are willing. And if they want to contact someone about that, I would contact um, city clerk or the deputy city clerk.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if I may add one thing, uh, on election day itself, we, uh, we envision needing some energetic people to be available uh, because we're talking about traffic control and dealing with people in their cars. And so it's, it's, I think that's, we do have a need in that direction because it's more than your typical election worker duties that involve sitting at a table. We will need to have people who also who can be running around a good bit.
And does it have to be the full day? Like if you were working a poll traditionally? No, it could be at half the day.
We could do half-day shifts.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
And it is paid. It's not a volunteer job. I mean, it, people need to volunteer to have it, but they would also get paid.
Councilmember Smith.
Uh, first want to thank everyone for all your hard work. Um, I really appreciate it. So if someone wants to register to vote, can they come in October twenty-second? That's the date I, I remember seeing. And where do they go in the community center? Or do they go down to the police department? Or will there be a table or someone outside directing them?
Um, I think that would my, I think it was initially going to be somewhere else, but I would defer to the city clerk on where the location is going to be.
Right. So um we think, oh, we're going to try doing a setup actually nearer the ballot boxes themselves.
Okay.
We're going to check that up. We're going to stay outdoors. We're not having people come into the building. We're, we're going to be outside of the building and it may involve some running back and forth and, and um going in and out for us to get things, but we're not, we're trying not to have people come into the building itself. Uh, so our, our thought is for tomorrow, we're, we will actually set up near, not far from the ballot boxes themselves. And that way uh, we can both be under shelter and, and near those ballot boxes where a lot of questions do come up. Uh, we're open to being out back as well, but I, I would like to try the, that front entrance area and see how that works. But it, we can in, in any case, we will be at the community center. We will be outdoors and we'll have signage to for people and get word out and have signage for people to know where to go.
Okay, excellent. Okay, excellent.
Clarification, clar, one moment. So one of the things I, I think I heard from you, Councilmember Smith, you can register even up to the day of election day.
Right, right.
Right, okay. So you had, I heard a different date. So I just wanted to make sure that people know.
I mean, I thought it started, I thought there would be staff available starting October. Yes.
Yes.
Right. So, and after that person had registered, they will have an opportunity to vote.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you so much.
Great. Um, I don't see any other hands. It's 11:15. I think we're done for the evening. Thank you very much again, Brian and the whole Board of Elections and to our city clerk. So this is, I guess, the official, like, last meeting of this city council. I guess we, who gets the election results? Like, there's a shift. We do a transition.
Yeah, you get the election results.
We get the election results and then we
You get the election results, right?
So we still have one other meeting to get the election results. And yeah. So thank you all for tonight and see you on the other side.
If we don't like, if we don't like you.
You're, someone just muted you.
Good night.
Good night.